All right, good evening, Santa Paula, welcome to City Hall. We are going to start, call this meeting to order at 6:41, again, our apologies for the delay. We're gonna ask that if you need Spanish interpretation, please come and see our city clerk, Julie Latchell. There's instruments available for interpretation, and I see people with the headphones, perfect. All right, we are gonna invite Dean Alguín to please join us for the invocation. I'm gonna ask everybody to please stand. And please silence your cell phones.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessing in our community. Guide us to your wisdom and the grace given by the Holy Spirit that we may reach unity. Lord, we also pray for the conflict in the Middle East. We ask you to provide the counsel and the will of all the parties to come to some equitable solution in that conflict. It's the ability and the differences to acknowledge these conflicts and to cordially respect those indifferent views, that after all, that's the hallmark of our community. We thank you for the gifts you have showered on us, and that they will inspire us to inspire others. And me, we remind ourselves that we should never grow weary of doing what is right. All this we ask in your holy name, amen.
I'd like to ask Councilmember Ornellus to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. City Attorney Zer- I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Crossway?
Present.
Councilmember Cornejo?
Here.
Councilmember Ornellus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Woz?
Here.
And Mayor Chavez?
Here.
All present this evening.
Great, Ms. Castillo, do we have some information regarding closed session report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, council recessed in a closed session to discuss item 5A on the special agenda, a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code 54957.6. City representatives were Chief Labor Negotiator Irma Rodriguez Moisa, City Manager Dan Singer, Finance Director Chrissy Ramirez, Human Resources Administrator Lorna Alvarez. The employee organizations involved were the Community Services Officer Association, Midmanagement Association, Professional and Supervisory Association, Service Employee International Union Local 721, Santa Paula Police Officers Association, and unrepresented employees, executive management confidential employees, and part-time employees. There were no reportable actions taken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. We are going to public comment, item six on the agenda. Is there any public comment?
I have received no public comment cards this evening.
Great, thanks so much. We're moving to item seven, presentations. I'd like to invite Dr. Denneren from Ventura County Behavioral Health and her team to join her, so she's not standing there by herself. And before you start your presentation, I do want to mention that May was Mental Health Awareness Month. And we all know that everyone struggles in some way with mental health issues or is feeling with stress, and we want to be able to ensure that it's year-long, these conversations happen year-long. So, we had a request for this topic to be brought up, and I thank Mr. Eubanks for making that request, and I wanted to make sure that the community knows what resources are available, and that's why the call to Ventura County Behavioral Health and Dr. Denneren, thank you so much for picking up the phone and being so quickly responding, we appreciate you.
No problem, thank you so much. For the record, my name is Dr. Loretta Denneren, I am the County Behavioral Health Director. Thank you again so much, Mayor Chavez, for the invitation. Thank you, councilmembers, city manager, and staff. We are very excited to be here, especially on a non-mental health awareness month, because we agree that mental health awareness is definitely a year-round, every single day, and we enjoy the opportunity to talk about all of these things, especially in our own communities. We have a lot of services and activities in our communities that people don't know about, so we appreciate invitations to city council meetings so that we can share information, bring staff along who some live and work in these communities and can provide services. So just a little background and history, Mental Health Awareness Month was created to really educate the public about mental health conditions and prevention efforts. Awareness is key, mental health affects everyone, and there are different levels and continuums. And so, our mandate at the county is to provide services to our most seriously behavioral, seriously ill folks with behavioral health conditions. And so, while we have a mandate to serve those who are the most seriously ill, we also do a lot of prevention and engagement and early intervention activities, because we hope to prevent people from ending up in our complex treatment system. And so, again, we are recognizing the vital role that mental health plays, especially given the stressors that we're all faced with today, and our children and our youth. And there's a lot of things happening in our communities right now, locally, nationally, that are impacting lives, and people who once upon a time probably would say that their mental health was great and that they had no concerns, are now being faced with issues that, you know, we put terms like depression and anxiety to, that they're just not familiar with, because they would otherwise be, and you know, fair condition or good, but now, especially given all that's happening in the world, they're feeling it and they don't necessarily have the language to describe it. So a lot of what we do is helping people understand how to connect those dots as far as how they're feeling, how their emotions are going, with some resources and help prevent it from escalating and getting worse. We like to remind people that your mental health is just as important as your physical health, and over the last 20 years, really, our healthcare system has really tried to integrate more our physical and mental health. And so, many of you who've gone to your own, like, primary care doctors, may have noticed recently, in the last few years, they've started asking about, hey, have you had feelings of hopelessness, or, you know, feelings of being sad or anxious, asking maybe about substance use and tobacco use. Once upon a times, primary care doctors didn't ask about those things, because they weren't trained, and they didn't really know what to do should someone have an issue. And so, we do a lot of work with our partners in the primary care health system, again, to help guide them and know what to look for, especially if someone looks like they're looking like they need a little bit more treatment. We all know, again, mental health conditions can affect everyone, but one in five adults has, you know, a mental health condition, and so that means that's probably someone that you know. And a lot of times, people are just, what do I look for? What am I supposed to do? Like, how do I help refer people to services? And so, my assistant director is going to provide you with some really practical resources that we have locally in county, and then we have a packet of information that we will provide to you and that we can email to the council. That is all public information and can be distributed to our community members. So I'm gonna turn it over to Connie.
And I was gonna ask, before you switch over, if, Ms. Latchell, could you put the website I just sent you on the screen? Because it's a wonderful resource that's available.
Yeah, so, thank you for that. Connie is definitely gonna mention some of the highlights from that website. It's a regular, living, breathing website that we keep up to date. We also try to simplify it, so once you get on, you'll see that there are different categories. So, you know, if you have questions about how to talk to youth, or older adults, or, you know, our LGBTQ+ community, or our Latino community, we try to break things out so that it's easy for people to follow. And again, anytime people have thoughts or suggestions, there's a way to provide that to us on the website as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. Connie Moreno Parazam, the Assistant Director of Behavioral Health. I did prepare this information, English and Spanish, it's in your packet for you, you can make copies, and I know we have a lot of our Spanish speaking. When I started this, I don't know if I can give my back, but anyway, so, as Dr. Denneren was saying, one of the topics that no one really wants to talk about is suicide, or taking someone's life, so we are here to share with you in the website on suicide prevention, which is one of our major focuses in behavioral health. And as she, as Dr. Denneren said, we look at mental health and substance abuse. So, a lot of folks, the stigma is still so pronounced that we worry about folks not calling us or coming in for services, all ages. So this crosses cultures, ages, and then there's cultural context within how people want to express themselves, that maybe the workforce that is in the particular area they go to don't know how to define it or to get help. But just, when it, just some of the, they call them, we call them indicators or some warning signs to look for. Pay attention to when somebody loses interest in doing activities that they liked to do before, or that they found joy in, giving away their belongings or their valuables, people that they, things that they care for, people that are avoiding social activities, that's another one. They withdraw and isolate, they neglect themselves, their self-care, they don't take care of themselves. They become very preoccupied with talking about death and dying, pay attention to that indicator, and then looking for concern like others of their personal safety. So, those are just some major indicators that we look for. So how can one support a person that may be going through this? So this is nationwide, this is a campaign that is nationwide, you probably have seen it on television, ask, be there, keep them safe, keep them, help them connect, and check in. And again, this is like promoted nationwide for us to help folks connect with people. So some of the resources that we have, we really would like you to reach out to us, to our, we have for folks who really show what is called, we call it imminent danger, somebody who wants to hurt themselves or others, please, please, please call our access and crisis line. So we have our, call 911. People are calling 911, and then sometimes people turn it over to 988. So 988 launched to help folks with also with mental health. We also have trained officers, crisis intervention team and officers that are trained on how to help identify these warning signs that I'm telling you about. We work very much in conjunction with different partners. Our access line, which I hope we can, is 1-866-998-2243. And this is again in the packet that we gave you, and again, if this becomes difficult to remember, remember 988. 988 is the easiest one, right? And as Dr. Denneren said, we have a lot of resources in our website, it's very easy to navigate, some of the things that you'll see in your packet, we have trainings, we have a suicide prevention council, we have information when those meetings take place, so folks can stay very connected and know where to go and what to do. Like I said, this is a tough topic, most people don't want to talk about it, and or they talk about it, I hope, with a loved one, hope with a priest, or hope with a pastor, or one of you that coming in contact, please, please call us. We do want to prevent losing any, losing one person is too many. So we wanna, we're here to help in any way we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Connie. With that, we just wanted to again say thank you very much. I also wanted to let people know, one of our amazing managers, Zandra Tadeo is here, who oversees our services for this area in Santa Paula, and we have, you know, different clinics here, we have adult services, youth and family services, substance use services, you name it, we have it, and I can take any questions, if anyone has any questions or concerns.
Other questions from councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Cornejo.
Thank you so much for being here, and this is just so important, because it's so important to overcome the stigma or the embarrassment of asking for help when you feel weak. I did want to mention, amongst all of the categories of care and attention that you give, that this month is also Men's Mental Health Awareness Month as well, and that may be one of many special categories where there may be some extra embarrassment or stigma for asking for help. So, I just appreciate all you're doing, and getting this word out is really important. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate that. We recently launched a new program, Helping Men Recover, which is, you know, on the lines of integrating substance use, which can be challenging in and of itself, and then a lot of times we see an underlying mental health condition, once someone has time to, you know, gain some sobriety and really get down to what the real issues are, so.
I just wanna add one thing. A lot of people that tell us they don't have any issues with mental health or substance abuse, they show their symptoms with physical. So they go see their, with all due respect to our doctors, but then know, we're trying to work on increasing those linkages to us, because a lot of folks say they have heart disease, diabetes, any of those, and there's some underlying issues that are not being addressed. The issue about men, being, myself Hispanic, and having six brothers, and three sisters, but the sisters, we got them to go, but you're right, the society teaches our men different to behave and to do things differently than women. Women, we've been going to therapy sometimes longer, or we go into services, but I do appreciate that comment very much. Thank you.
Councilmember.
I just want to say thank you for being here. Thank you to the mayor for inviting you all to come. I work at VCOE, and I get to help put on trainings for mental health, so I get to work with some of your staff over at VCBH, so thank you. It's really exciting for me to hear what I do at work being talked about here, because it is very important. So, I just really appreciate you being here, and thank you to Councilmember Cornejo for touching on men's mental health, because the stigma around mental health itself is just very big, and it's something that a lot of us work towards chipping away at, but I really appreciate it. Thank you. Can we make sure that their number or resources are available on our website?
We're actually gonna, I know, I didn't see Jonathan, but I was gonna mention if you could have Jonathan put all the information for VCBH, and send that out through our normal communication channels. And I just wanted to say an acknowledgement to the investments that have been made by VCBH, because they're rooted in community. We have a group here called Project Esperanza, who's a youth prevention program that is funded by VCBH, and there's so many others, and it's important, again, to have a community approach to addressing these issues as a collective and a partnership.
Yes, that is something that's very important to the county. We can and should not do it all. We rely heavily on our community-based organizations to do the work that we can't do, to get in the places where we can't get to, and to use the voices that we don't have to really speak to our community and their needs, so, thank you.
This Sunday, we have the Santa Clara Valley Pride, and there's like four different areas of behavioral health that are participating, including the mobile unit. So, again, it's being strategic but creative about how to connect with community is so important to break through and help those in need. So thank you, Dr. Denneren.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you so much.
All right. All right, I am gonna call Commander Starnah to the podium. There's special recognition tonight for someone special that is here today, and he's gonna be surrounded by his loving family, and we want to take an opportunity to recognize him. So Commander Starnah, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, those of us that are joining us here in the, in the room and virtually. I'm excited to be up here tonight on behalf of Chief Aguilar in the Santa Paula Police Department to present the Dispatcher of the Year Award. The Dispatcher of the Year Award recognizes outstanding 911 dispatchers who demonstrate exceptional skills, dedication, and professionalism in their work. It's an annual award, often presented by public safety organizations to individuals who have gone above and beyond in their service to the public and their colleagues. Our city staff, in support with our council, does a fantastic job in recognizing the work of our employees and those within the community. That's one of the things I love about working here. Tonight, I am pleased to announce and recognize Carlos CJ Alarcon as the Santa Paula Police Dispatcher of the Year.
Ooh!
Carlos, he came to us initially as an entry-level police officer. He started out in the academy in October of 2023, and due to unforeseen circumstances, CJ was not able to complete the academy. And he became a public safety dispatcher in our department, and I want to commend him for his professionalism, his maturity during that time. But without hesitation, CJ stepped up, and he joined, at the time, our short-staffed dispatch unit, which is now not short-staffed, we're fully staffed in there. But he went through rigorous training, the process, being a dispatcher is not easy, you have to multitask, do a lot of different things, and we needed him to be out there on his own pretty quickly, so he stepped up and he did that. He flourished in this position ever since, and when I asked him, like, why Santa Paula? He knows about our secret here. He said, he's like, I like the small-town appeal, and I had a lot of family members who worked here in Santa Paula, so he, they let him in on the secret about, about working here, so. He's been described by his peers as a team player, he's always willing to help out his coworkers, especially in last-minute situations, emergency situations, he's the one, we'll call him, he'll come in, two in the morning, three in the morning, we thank his family for that, but he's always there for us. His dispatch supervisor, Frank Garcia, is here tonight, and the dispatch commander, Cody Madison, is here tonight to help us do this. CJ brought a lot of his family, and he grew up in Ventura, he's here with his wife, Eileen, and I did receive permission to say that they are welcoming their first child in November, so. So I want to welcome CJ up here, and please bring your family up here, but we want to recognize you and provide you with this award for your outstanding service to our community. Thank you very much, CJ.
Before we take the picture, CJ, how about saying a few words? You're so vital to our city's public safety, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but you're always on, you're an emergency man.
That's true, I didn't get to prepare any words. Okay, well, I guess I'll just, I want to thank my family for supporting me with all my endeavors, and with, just with all my endeavors, and whether it had been becoming a police recruit or a dispatcher, and then I'd also like to thank the officers and other dispatchers I work with, they are the ones that have helped me become the dispatcher I am today, and they're always helping me evolve into better dispatch tomorrow, so, thank you to everyone.
Thank you, thank you very much. We're gonna take a photo, but we're all about family here, so where's the family? The family has to be in this photo.
Yeah. She needs to.
In the middle, because you're the man of the hour.
I asked, I asked for one, and Natalie brought me one. She left the whole bag.
Thank you.
I asked, I asked for one, and Natalie brought me one.
She left the whole bag.
Thank you, Commander Starnah.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is item 7C, Project Esperanza Recognition. So I'm actually gonna invite Elvia Hernandez to please join us here, and she's gonna introduce, si puede por favor introducir, los jóvenes que están aquí, y el maestro.
Lo voy a hacer en español.
Hágalo en español.
¿Por qué todos hablamos español, verdad?
Sí.
Okay, buenas tardes, a ustedes, buenas tardes Pedro, y todos los consejeros que son mis amigos, de corazón, son mi familia. Es un honor para mí estar el día de hoy aquí, porque es el año número 14 de Proyecto Esperanza, y nunca había sido reconocido. Gracias por esta oportunidad, y no para mí, para estos niños que han estado con nosotros durante mucho tiempo, y hace dos años que tenemos al maestro Master Urrutia con nosotros, y ha habido un cambio muy excelente en los niños, tanto académicamente como mentalmente, como físicamente, que los padres lo han visto. He entregado una carta a la directora de salud mental para que la lea, que está muy bonita, que representa a todos los niños de Proyecto Esperanza, y tenemos cuatro niños que ahorita van a ser certificados, son cinta negra, pero aparte van a recibir un reconocimiento donde pueden ser instructores en todo el mundo, por parte del maestro que es la Master Urrutia, y también quiero que él dé unas palabras, porque creo que yo coordino el programa, pero el que está con ellos instruyéndolos es Master Urrutia, que le pido que pase.
Okay, muy buenas tardes, gracias por la oportunidad de dirigirme a ustedes. Quiero darles las gracias a Elvia por haberme invitado a formar parte del staff de maestros de Proyecto Esperanza en el área del Tecoando. Ya van dos años de trabajo, okay? Entrenando fuerte para lograr este nivel en el Tecoando, gracias al Departamento de Salud Mental del Condado de Ventura, a la Ciudad de Santa Paula, y a todos los, a todas las instituciones que forman parte de este maravilloso y visionario proyecto, ya que por medio de su apoyo estamos desarrollando líderes capaces de incorporarse positivamente a la sociedad. Este año 2025 hemos logrado graduar la primera promoción de cinturones negros a nivel nacional e internacional, una certificación que viene desde Corea.
Wow.
Pero no solo se han graduado de cinturones negros a nivel internacional, sino que también hoy están en el programa de instructores comprometidos en aportar sus conocimientos por medio de horas comunitarias en las clases de Tecoando, con sus compañeros de cinturones de colores, y sobre todo siendo guías de más niños y jóvenes de la comunidad. Sabemos que este proyecto seguirá cambiando vidas y convirtiendo a estos jóvenes en los grandes líderes del futuro, profesionales que necesitamos con disciplina, integridad, perseverancia, humildad, y control de sí mismo. Muchas gracias, y Proyecto Esperanza, gracias.
Por favor, por favor, ¿qué es ahí? Maestro, por favor. Vamos a llamar a los cuatro jóvenes. We're gonna call the four youth that just have, as part of the project and part of this program have received their black belts, are now in as training instructors, right? They're on the path to become training instructors, so, where is Esteban Carrillo? All right, Esteban? Stay up there with your master. We have Victoria Carrillo. Allison Medina. Lizbeth Magaña. And, like I've always said, it takes a village, a community, a teacher, and a community to wrap themselves in family. Todos los papás que están aquí, por favor levanten la mano. Gracias por poner sus jóvenes aquí. And if you all remember, Santa Paula, for the last two years, we've had a large group for Project Esperanza participate in the Christmas parade, the holiday parade, and they do their presentation and their art, and showing off to the city the talents that they have and what they're learning. So thank you so much. Master Carlos Urrutia as well. Yes, councilmembers.
Just a small request, if I could, could you summarize what was said in Spanish for those who do not speak Spanish that are listening in?
Absolutely. So, Elvia is the organizer of Project Esperanza, Project Esperanza, which is basically a youth prevention organization that is funded by Behavioral Health in the county. And this is one of the core programs that they offer, is making sure that youth have learned, learn, have opportunities so that they can learn discipline through this art, they learn how to build teamwork, they learn how to defend themselves, they build self-confidence and social emotional support. And those are things that a young person needs to be able to make positive decisions in life. And so, the master, Urrutia, has spent the last two years with, how many, cuántos jóvenes? How many total han participado?
In Project Esperanza.
En los últimos dos años.
No sé.
So over 40 youth this last two years have had the opportunity to go through this prevention program. They participate in various things in the community, and it's all made possible because their parents want to make sure that they have better So, thank you. So, she's saying that only four came because either the black belt, however, there is yellow belt, there's other belts, that they're all, they're on this path, right? They're on a path to learning and really exploring who they are and they are fascinated by this art. So, thank you for giving them that opportunity.
And that these are on a national level, if not international level, the black belt that they've earned.
They have very rigorous standards for, that they have to go through in order to get that recognition. So, thank you for being our black belts in San Apola. We're so proud of you. We're going to take a picture each of us together as a group with your certificate.
Feel like a giant. I'm short, I'm short.
Listos? Okay, congratulations. All right, thank you so much everybody. We are going to continue to agenda item 7D. We are going to invite Mr. Mason to come and provide the community and economic development report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't take offense.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on our department report. Last one was in January, so we're doing February through May. Kind of exciting times for us, the last probably six months, we've just been a trickle of new employees. So, I wanted to introduce our two new Monica Lopez administrative analysts. We, I was going to say borrow, but borrow means you get to return. So, we stole her from the police department and just delighted to have her. And then Eileen Ramos, Community Development Technician, a new graduate of Cal Poly Pomona, just fresh out of school and excited to work. She's a great fit. We're just excited to have both of them. A lot going on, just real quickly, 28 active planning projects and a lot of stuff going on as far as just back and forth, especially with Ms. Castillo and BB&amp;K working on code updates, which you're going to get another one tonight. Building and safety, really the majority of what we have is really kind of goes into two categories. A lot of additions and modifications to property, whether that's businesses or homes, but as, if you've had a chance to drive by Harvest, which the mayor does pretty regularly, there's just so much going on out there. The level of home starts and completions is just phenomenal. From there quickly. Code compliance, if you look at our past reports on this, as we go back over the last, you know, year and a half, we've pretty much been at around 100, 110 code cases closing three to five within a quarter. And now we're at 176 code cases, we're closing 49 in this last quarter. It's, a lot of them, one thing I should note, a lot of the code cases we have, sometimes they don't even get opened as a code case. Thanks James. But a lot of the, what we would normally have as code cases are resolved before we have to do any citations or anything. Just providing somebody notification of what they need to do. In some cases, it's construction without permits and they come in and get their permits. In other cases, it's just property maintenance. And then economic development, collaborating with City Manager's Office and P-Bid and Chamber of Commerce on our Business Connect. Every month we get an opportunity to meet with businesses within the community. And then the business roundtables, which as you well know was a great opportunity to get input from our business community on the council's strategic goals. So, it's just a love that we have these touchpoints in the community to be able to have dialogue and have an understanding of what the community wants and needs. Housing and homelessness, we've done, in that period, we've done two quarterly updates with Spirit, just talking about what they're doing, what their numbers look like. We hope to have them here this fall to provide an update on what they have as far as what the last years look like, as far as number of people that have got into housing, the services that they're providing, that type of thing. So, we'll have them before you're here soon. And quarterly meeting with the county COC, we have another one this week. And that's just what's happening with Behavioral Health and the COC as far as the services that they're providing and how we can collaborate on that. A lot of collaboration with affordable housing developers. There's just so much activity right now as far as construction goes and, you know, kind of pre-planning for things. So, Redtail, if you had a chance to drive by there, they're starting to go vertical now. So, that, that's pretty exciting. And then people's self-help housing will be coming to you at the next council meeting talking about some of the recommendations from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Task Force. And then Homes &amp; Hope, Cabrillo and San Apola Housing Authority have combined together to do Topa Vista Villas, which is right across from Vons and next to Teague Park. I'll talk about that in a little bit. And we just did the annual housing report to HCD and I'll talk a little bit about that, but kind of get through this. Industrial development, San Apola West, still working on promotion for that. I have a lot of interest. Unfortunately, a lot of it is more leaning, right now leaning more towards equipment yards and trucking. And we've really told them that's, both of those things require CUP and both of those things, we said that we really don't feel that we're going to be able to recommend that to planning commissioner or council. We need employment. So, we'll stay with that and stay with the brokers that are pushing that to get some things in there. And then if you've driven by the big pad, that's been basically two acres of concrete, it's starting to go vertical now. So, it's going to be a tilt-up concrete building. Other than lemon wood, it'll be the nicest industrial buildings that we have in town. So, it's a good entrance to our community and an expectation of what we want to see moving forward. And over by San Apola Self-Storage, you can see the second phase of their self-storage is coming up out of the ground right now. In fact, it's getting really close to done by the end of this year that will be occupied. La Toraza, they've had some hiccups with contractors and had some hiccups with Edison getting some upgrades in power, but they're getting ready to finish aesthetics outside of the building and drywall on the inside. Don't have a completion date yet, but I've been kind of pushing both the contractor and the owner to kind of get a checklist schedule so that at least he has an idea what the window looks like of finishing it. Good Orchard Cafe, which also includes 14 affordable housing units, is well under construction and had a request from council to get back with the cafe entertainment ordinance that will come to you this fall. We'll have, through the summer, we'll have some feedback on both community and the businesses that do have live entertainment to get a sense of where we want to go and what the community feels as far as that goes. East Area Gateway, Medical Harvest Pavilion, we've had some good conversations with the county, with Limoneira and the fire department, and I think most of the issues that were concerns about circulation and access for the hospital have been resolved. And so, from the standpoint of there being any fly in the ointment of the hospital being able to get built, at least that part of it is being dealt with. So, we're excited about that, that that's moving ahead and they seem committed to make that happen. The medical office, part of that is 77,000 square feet, medical offices and some of the county offices is under planned review right now. Gaelic Finch, McGallic Finch Property, that's the 113,000 square foot commercial development site. We just-
Where is that again?
That is right next to where Redtail is. So, that's the, it would be the south, I'm sorry, the northwest corner of Halec and 126. So, right from Halec all the way over to Redtail is that project. They are, also, actually, I'll do that. It is number two on that map. Both the kind of triangle boomerang and the two is that 113,000 square feet.
The Penrods are the ones that are-
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're developing it for the owners. And I just received today the environmental impact report update for that. So, we're moving ahead pretty quickly. Probably be going to planning commission in August on that. They need CUPs for a shopping center.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Where's the Good Orchard Cafe?
The Methodist Church across from Glen Tavern.
Oh.
So, the fellowship hall is going to be, should have provided some background. Fellowship Hall is going to be a cafe and an event center. So, they'll be able to do catering out of there because they have a full commercial kitchen in that space.
That's the big red brick building, right?
And then the three-story in the back is going to be 14 affordable apartments. Haven't decided yet what's going to happen with the sanctuary, but they're thinking maybe something like gallery space or, or something like that. But it's being rented out periodically for church services. So, we'll see what goes on that.
Awesome, thank you.
And then number five is really where the medical, medical offices. Number four, and what we've heard from the Penrods and everyone that's involved in this, once the hospital goes, number four, those two pieces, which is just under five acres, will be a great opportunity for more retail and hotel. Housing Development, East Area One. So, right now, you count everything that you see out there as far as that initial phase of development and the former school site and what's all of the hillside. All of that's been sold and that's the numbers where we're at right now. Lots sold to builders, 1,261. Homes sold, 670. Homes closed, 648. So, if you have a chance to see what's up there, I wanted to show you. That's the view looking towards the ocean, looking east to west across what's been graded out up there. So, those are homes, which we had a chance to go up there with some of the developer and engineers up to the top of the site and from the east side, looking east, you can see all the way into LA County. From the west side, looking west, you can see the Channel Islands on a clear day. So, that's, there's going to be on both sides, 10 to 12 home sites that'll have those views up there. And other ones will have peek-a-boo views. So, it's pretty, pretty amazing to see how fast this is being developed out, so. And that's kind of the layout of that. We just got, there's seven phases. We've got the first four phases in for review right now for the models. Each phase of this has multiple home typologies and models. So, it's going to be a lot of diversity within the neighborhoods and they'll have their own park in there also. So, it's. I talked before about Topa Vista Villas across from, next to Teague Park, across from Vons. They've gotten their funding and at least part of their funding, as we talk about affordable housing, it's many layers of funding. But we've looked at concept review with them and have talked through fire and public works and we're really close to having them submit plans on this project. One thing I'm really excited about their approach, it's, it seems like I, we work with people that are good at what they do and then somebody comes along that does it so much better. They're, everything that we've asked on this project, they've made adjustments to and they're going to be doing community outreach to all the neighbors behind there and just being able to have those conversations rather than just, I'm entitled, I can build this, they understand community and how to build community. KB Homes, this is an insectary site on San Apola Street, just off of 12th Street. They're looking at, right now, doing about 68 homes on the site. They may buy the site directly west of this and increase that to about 110 units. We'll find out. They're in escrow on the one, they're trying to negotiate the other one. One thing that's important about kind of the affordability, both this project and the Kmart project, KB is looking at working with Heritage on the Kmart project. We've talked to them about including affordability into these projects. Everybody wants at some point to do an in-loo fee, but given the size and the type of project that they're doing, there's a great opportunity to be able to do kind of workforce housing. They've got several opportunities for two bedrooms in both of these projects that could be, I think I mentioned this before, could be in the 500 or below $500,000 range. The fact that we'd have any housing in the county in that range for sale is, is pretty amazing. So, we're going to hold a candle to them on that and try and get that as a part of these projects because it really would make a difference. That's just a really quick breakdown of housing. You've seen this before, but right now total proposed affordable units that we're counting is 350 in, in a total of, without Harvest, about 500. So, that's exciting. One thing, you've kind of gone through budget earlier today and just understanding the wave of building permits followed by certificates of occupancy and us getting plan checks. So, plan checks on the front end, building permits at the tail end. So, we keep having this wave. So, right now, we're kind of really into building permits with all that's happening in Harvest and these new projects. So, we'll have a little bit of gap and then we're going to have a spike again with, after plan check of issuing building permits. So, as you can see, the big shift in permits from last year to this year at the same time is huge. Lemonwood Business Park, still trying to work on movement with the vacancies that are happening there. Probably the biggest thing is there's a lot of property for lease. I'm talking to people regularly that want to buy property. They want to assume a piece of property and do their business. So, I'm going to work with brokers and some of these owners to see if we can work on some of these, to be able to work, if not lease to own, at least having some flexibility on that. Working with P-Bid, a lot of outreach to business. I think probably one of my best times really is cruise night, get a chance to talk to everybody that's downtown and be able to see what's going on. Facade Improvement Program, we're doing outreach right now. I have 13 applications. I have, for those of you who have facade interest and have an application in, of those 13, I have four that actually filled out the full application. So, we've been going back through and walking through things like insurance, contractor bids, all those things. So, as we get through that, we'll be able to start issuing grants to those. And working with BB&amp;K on downtown property vacancy strategy, we should have that to you probably about the time you come back from break. And I already talked about business roundtables. And then other activities, still working on homeless facility and operations funding, both for Spirit and what else we can do as far as outreach with the unhoused population in town to be able to assist with that. And Affordable Housing Trust Oversight Committee, we are on about our fifth meeting. I think today we recognize we made that shift from storming and norming to performing. They're kind of a good group, they understand each other and we've got several projects that are going to be coming to them in the next month to be able to provide recommendations to council on funding. Mobile Home Rent Review almost speaks for itself. That was, it was an interesting three months, what we went through and just exciting for those residents and real kudos to that committee and what they did in a three and a half hour meeting to deal with a lot of information and come to a decision within that, so, on 400 mobile estates. And then Economic Development Standing Committee and Housing and Homeless Standing Committee. We have had one meeting of Economic Development Standing, Housing and Homeless one also, but we'll be coming back right after break on both of those. One thing, you've kind of gone through budget earlier today, and just understanding the wave of building permits followed by certificates of occupancy and us getting plan checks. So plan checks on the front end, building permits at the tail end. So we keep having this wave. So right now, we're kind of really into building permits with all that's happening in Harvest and these new projects. So we'll have a little bit of gap, and then we're going to have a spike again with, after plan check of issuing building permits. So as you can see, the big shift in permits from last year to this year at the same time is huge. Lemonwood Business Park, still trying to work on movement with the vacancies that are happening there. Probably the biggest thing is there's a lot of property for lease. I'm talking to people regularly that want to buy property. They want to assume a piece of property and do their business. So I'm going to work with brokers and some of these owners to see if we can work on some of these, to be able to work, if not lease to own, at least having some flexibility on that. Working with P-Bid, a lot of outreach to business. I think probably one of my best times really is cruise night, get a chance to talk to everybody that's downtown and be able to see what's going on. Facade Improvement Program, we're doing outreach right now. I have 13 applications. I have, for those of you who have facade interest and have an application in, of those 13, I have four that actually filled out the full application. So we've been going back through and walking through things like insurance, contractor bids, all those things. So as we get through that, we'll be able to start issuing grants to those. And working with BB&amp;K on downtown property vacancy strategy, we should have that to you probably about the time you come back from break. And I already talked about business roundtables. And then other activities, still working on homeless facility and operations funding, both for Spirit and what else we can do as far as outreach with the unhoused population in town to be able to assist with that. And Affordable Housing Trust Oversight Committee, we are on about our fifth meeting. I think today we recognize we made that shift from storming and norming to performing. They're kind of a good group, they understand each other, and we've got several projects that are going to be coming to them in the next month to be able to provide recommendations to council on funding. Mobile Home Rent Review almost speaks for itself. That was, it was an interesting three months, what we went through, and just exciting for those residents and real kudos to that committee and what they did in a three and a half hour meeting to deal with a lot of information and come to a decision within that, so, on 400 mobile estates. And then Economic Development Standing Committee and Housing and Homeless Standing Committee. We have had one meeting of Economic Development Standing, Housing and Homeless one also, but we'll be coming back right after break on both of those. That's kind of a quick run-through, but if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them on some of those things.
Questions? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Quick question, actually a couple of them. The, we've seen conceptual drawings of the improvements to Telegraph Road next to Redtail. Do we know when that's going to occur, before occupancy afterwards? What's the timeline? If they get that completed, that highway's pretty dark and narrow, so.
Yeah, it'll be in concert with the development of that site. I think the only caveat to that is trying to understand what the development of the retail site's going to happen. We want some economies of scale because you can't have the road closed and tore up over two periods. So there's, hopefully there's some opportunity to collaborate and overlap that.
Thank you. And the property that, on the 500 West Harvard that was going to be a medical facility, now it's going to be living spaces. But, and I don't know if you can talk a little bit about the really unique design because it is going to be three-story, but the way it's designed is interesting and just how it affects the neighborhood.
Yeah, they, they did a really good job. Because there's an existing neighborhood across their back fence line, and there are a couple of structures in there that actually go to four stories. And what they've done is they've articulated the buildings away from the curb so that you have kind of, it undulates from the curb line and it undulates from the visibility of the site. So you don't have just the big box of buildings. There's a lot of, another word, I'm trying to think of another word other than undulation, but variation in the form of the building. Also, there are, I believe, around 32 to 35 feet away from the back fence line. So between landscape and that space, you don't have people looking out a back window into people's backyards. Two things that they did do that were really good, they were asking about using Teague Park parking, not only for parking but also for drive-through. We said, fire department's going to want to do full circulation around that site. It's, if you have a four-story unit in there, they need to be able to get to it from four sides. And they said, no problem, we'll do that, put another driveway in. They changed their whole plan to be Harvard and Lori Lane access that circulates the whole building. So they, as I said earlier, they've responded to every department and every concern that we had, just without any resistance. They're doing a great job.
Thank you. My third question, I know that we've had maybe individually questions about the Triangle property we purchased at Harvard and Main and on the east end, and any movement on that for projects?
Well, what we, what we're trying to put back together, the same team we had before, which actually did the navigation center in Thousand Oaks, which was many mansions, Homes to Hope, and Dignity Moves, and trying to do a project on there. Initially, we had talked about something as a temporary encampment site. We're still looking at that as a possibility as a trial, maybe for a short period of time, but that'll come back to the Housing and Homeless Subcommittee and to council. But the main thing is, if we do something like that, funding for anything that has to do with the unhoused is generally coming through CDBG HUD and through the county. And if it doesn't involve HUD-approved housing, there's no financial support for that. So we've got to think creatively for that. But the ideal we looked at from before was, we have a shelter that has congregate space with families and children, and the idea that across the street, we'd be able to do something that would be more focused on families and children. So that's the proposal and plan longer term to work on that site.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Just real quick, we could ask you questions all night. But I, have we had, have we heard anything as they've been working on the Harvest homes? Is there any concern as they get up closer to the hill that there'll be any challenges with insurance? Have they sort of vetted that out? How, how are those conversations coming?
That's a really great question. Two things happened. Obviously, the new fire maps came out, and the way that those maps go, they, they don't follow a linear pattern because the hills got curves to it. So you end up with these strange fire zones that will go through that whole foothill neighborhood. What Lennar, who's developing, master developer for that, what they have done is they've gone through and revised their landscape plans, their fencing plan, and anything that has to do with anything that would be flammable or combustible, and created that whole neighborhood to where it's, it's basically a hardened neighborhood. For example, you know, throughout everywhere, new developments, it's either vinyl or wood fences, they're putting in steel fences. So, and all the landscape is being designed in a way that's, you know, fire resistant. So they're, they're being really thoughtful of ours that. And they've got the input from Cal Fire and from Ventura County Fire on how to do that. So that's, and that will impact their-
That's good to hear that they're, they're working on home hardening as they design those houses. Do you know if they're also looking at roof materials and-
Yeah, every, well, actually, everything is a standard for that. The other factor that, you know, should never go without saying is the tanks up on the hill. So we've got a good water supply. That's another thing that's really, and the wells.
I believe they're building the zero scape and basically to all the expected new standards that'll, that'll start. So the five-foot setbacks-
All vegetation has to be, yeah.
That's good to hear. It still might be challenging, but at least it, it gives us a little bit of a movement in the right direction in terms of mitigating potential future risk. And then, I guess, just a comment, because again, we could talk about this all night, but when, when they start talking about the hotel, if that becomes a reality, one of the things that I was thinking recently is that we don't have a hotel that has an attached meeting space. So if someone was going to have, you know, business clients come in and then they wanted to host a meeting, we don't have a space for that. So anyway, it was just a, something that I've been thinking about, I just was going to plant that as you're in conversation with them, if there's any potential around that, if that space does realize, if that's something to think, that would just be something to, to think about.
It makes sense with the hospital and medical facilities, they're going to, you never have enough meeting space for anything, so that's good.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Mason.
Thank you.
We're going to jump a little bit, go to, going to go to consent calendar. Let's get some of the business out of the way. Does anybody have anything to pull or would like to ask questions for clarification?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one correction to make, and a red line has been distributed to each of the council members at the dais, and we have copies for the public who is interested on item 10B, the three-year professional services agreement with MKN and Associates. The correction is adding language that would limit rates to, limit their rates to a budget amount that is contingent upon the city's approved fiscal year budget each year. Thank you.
I, I have a question on 10B, Council, and I don't really need it to be polled if it's a simple answer, and if there's discussion, then I poll. I don't know if there's anything else that's to be polled, or if I can go ahead.
Go ahead, and ask the question, yeah.
There is a termination clause, which is standard. My question is, and then I don't know if it's complicated or not, if we were to hire a city engineer and find the need to reduce the contract, does that trigger a change in the contract, a termination, renegotiation? So were we to have a change in circumstance through the term of the contract?
Thank you, Councilmember Crossway, excuse me, Cornejo. So there is a, city can terminate at any time without cause by giving seven days written notice before the effective date of termination. As far as how that could be reduced, if you hire a city engineer, that's something I do not have knowledge about. So perhaps our Public Works Director has some insight into that, or our city manager.
I was hoping it's not too complicated, but I did see the seven-day notice, but I wasn't sure if it would trigger a full cancellation of contract and a renewal, having to redo it or, or not, so.
I would just add that the vast array of services that MKN provides us go well beyond what our engineer, if we were successful hiring one, would perform. So we would anticipate a continuance of, if, if not this relationship, a relationship with a firm that would help us with some of these oversight issues, water quality issues, et cetera. And then specifically, of course, MKN is assisting with the design, build, engineering of the new reverse osmosis system. That's a more discreet project. So, and representatives are here from the company if you have any questions particular to the scope of work that they have.
Yeah, and I was aware of the, how complicated it is and that it's multifaceted services. I just thought that would the hiring of an engineer be such a great change, that it would trigger some sort of change? And I, and I don't know about that. You know, I'm, I'm not here to say I'm against the contract, I just would anticipate potential change in the future, so.
And I will respond on behalf of the Public Works Director because he's, he's had a couple of conversations with me about this, that there are administrative tasks that MKN's been performing. We're looking to try and find ways to bring those in-house as much as possible. So that's the direction and the goal. It, it probably won't be just a, you know-
Right.
Cut-off, it'll be a smoother transition, if you will.
And that was what I was anticipating but wasn't sure, you know, with the seven-day notice, are there terms that can just allow us to accommodate changes that aren't entirely canceling the contract? So, thank you.
Well, and if I remember correctly, even when we did have a city engineer, it, what we still had to contract out for depended on what their skills, specialties were, right? So if their specialties were in, say, streets and that kind of thing, then as, as far as I remember, they still weren't doing like some of the water quality monitoring, and so there was, there's still, I would imagine there would still be, there still would be need for some specialized engineering support that might be outside of the scope of whatever the engineer's specialties were.
And actually, that would be my hope, is that that be in mind, that, you know, that we may not be at a point later on, if, if the situation changes, of completely throwing out a contract, but having the flexibility to, to continue, but with, with maybe some modified terms. So that was my concern, so.
And the contract allows that based on the, the language that's, that's on there, right?
So the contract contemplates three, three fiscal years of services, but at any point, the city can engage the consultant to amend that if both parties are in agreement.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was a possibility and was clear. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the consent calendar? All right, is there a motion to adopt?
Mayor, I'll move approve the consent calendar, 10A Adam through 10E Edward, with the change in the language of 10B 3.2.1, the change in the language in compensation.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Juarez, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there is a second by Councilmember Crosswhite. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? See, none? All of them favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to go, jump over to the public hearing. Yep.
Madam Clerk, do we have a clicker for the PowerPoint?
All right, public hearing verification, a posting notice by city clerk. Declaration of conflicts, if any. Declaration of experte contacts, if any. All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Staff presentation, Ms. Castillo.
Yes. Thank you, Council, members of the public. This is now a familiar presentation as we get through our development code. I want to quickly go through the initial slide since you're already familiar with basically the history of this project. We'll go through the overview, the code update process, and then, more importantly, the updates that are being presented tonight. So you're going to, what we did is we reviewed and revised the existing Santa Paula municipal code, 10, I'm sorry, shoot. I don't know if this is the correct slide, so. Yes. Okay, let's start again. So municipal code has not undergone a comprehensive update since 1997. This has been a longstanding goal of Council to do a thorough update. Here's some of the history that we've already gone through in prior meetings. To summarize, we had a joint meeting in May 2024 where it was decided that we would start with the development code, which is what we are covering tonight, and go through that development code sequentially with some priority areas moving to the top. Our first set of development code updates was to our ADU ordinance, and that was adopted in November 2024. The second set was adopted in February 2025, and that involved our development impact fees and definitions used in our development code, among other chapters. Then more, more recently was the update number three. On June 4, 2025, Council adopted chapters of the development code having to do with the establishment of zones, open space zones, agricultural zone, industrial zones, and the airport zone. So tonight, the ordinance being introduced is, involves a number of other chapters of development code. Residential zones is being amended, 1613. So that is being renumbered to 1608. When this went to the planning commission, they wanted to make edits to bring back the part of the code that had to do with the density or the inclusionary housing ordinance, which is now before the Affordable Housing Task Force for comment. They also wanted to hold on to the portion of the zoning or development code that had to do with development standards with the primary dwellings. So that was held back so there could be further study. What they did move forward with was the updating of the mobile home park zone. That chapter has to do with mostly the regulations and the kind of standards that govern the physical environment of the mobile home park zone. So that section was updated to be current with state laws. What also was updated was the city's density bonus law and other affordable housing incentives. What was largely done there was, as many cities have been doing, because density bonus law has been changing so frequently, it's been incorporated by reference into city codes so that anytime the state law changes, then the density, local density bonus ordinance is already compliant. Every city has to adopt its own local density bonus ordinance to implement the state law. And the general trend has been to remove more of local control over what type of incentives must be given to developers. And just to give a little background about density bonus law, it is meant to encourage the development of affordable housing. So what happens is, if a developer approaches a city promising to build so many units at lower affordability levels- lower affordability levels, something below market rate, or even housing for seniors or students, they can get a density in their properties that is higher than is permitted by the city's zoning regulations. And they could also apply for and must receive something called incentives, which are like deviations from our development standards. So that could be like reduced housing, or I'm sorry, reduced parking requirements, or smaller setbacks. So, you know, it's really meant to give them an incentive to build more affordable housing. And as this has progressed, cities have gotten less control over what they can deny. So I've already talked about this part. So Planning Commission wants the staff to hold a study session on the development standards for primary dwellings. And then Affordable Housing Task Force has already provided some comments on the inclusionary housing ordinance. And I believe that's probably not going to be coming back to council for some time because it needs to return to the Planning Commission first. So also going back to density bonus, our own, our law hasn't been updated since 2007, and I've already mentioned to you that we've incorporated by reference the state density bonus law, so we don't have to keep returning to it. And also amendments were made to the Historical Property Agreement section, Chapter 12, or Chapter 16 of our development code. Such technical edits were made, such as renumbering, and then we changed the title of Planning Director to Director, so it just matches the Economic and Community Development Director title. The big change that Planning Commission asked for and is presented to you tonight is removing from the definition of a qualified historical property that it be a commercial use. So now historical property can enter into a Mills Act agreement, and it does not have to be of a commercial use. This means the property owner can apply to enter an agreement with the city so that in exchange for preserving their property, they can get lower property taxes, reduced property taxes as an incentive. And as I mentioned earlier, the Mobile Home Park Zone has been updated, it's been renumbered, and some of the features that have been updated to match with state law and its regulations. The state law that governs the physical environment in Mobile Home Parks is called the Mobile Home Parks Act. So our code has, now has some regulations that are more in line with the state law. So roadway design, accessory buildings and uses, those must now all be available to the entire park, at least our code now specifies that. And one point to make is that while this is in our city code, it's actually reflective, reflects state law, and it is the Department of Housing and Community Development that enforces the Mobile Home Parks Act. The city can, if it wants to, be the enforcer of this law, but that's something that you need to request from HCD. And then our next steps will be to bring back to you the development code update set number five. That'll be just three chapters. And first, it'll go to Planning Commission next week on the 24th. And then after, for future city meetings, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance will go back, hopefully, to Planning Commission after it gets all the feedback from the task force on August 26. And then on July 2nd, you will be able to adopt the ordinance tonight if you so choose to introduce it this evening. If you have any questions, please let me know.
I have a question. So on the, the edit on the Mills Act, so it takes out commercial use, but it still has to be individually designated on the national historic places and as a city landmark? Because it says, is that what I'm reading? It says individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places, oh, or the California. So either national or California, and also designated as a city landmark.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
Does that conclude the staff presentation?
Yes, that concludes the presentation.
Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
All right, I'd like to close the public hearing. Discussion and action. Is there a motion to waive the first reading?
Yes, Mayor, I'll waive and read, waive the first reading by title only and introduce ordinance number 1346 in title, an ordinance amending chapter 16.13, 16.15, 16.23, 16.25, 16.29, 16.31, 16.33, 16.34, 16.35, and 16.40 of the Santa Paula municipal code in order to correct inconsistencies, outdated language and formatting, and finding the action to be sagittally exempt from SEQA under section 15061, B-Boy 3, and 15168-C, Charles 2 of the Public Resources Code.
All right, is, Vice Mayor makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, there's a second by Councilmember Nellis. Any further discussion, comments, or questions? Seeing none, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, we're moving on to agenda item 12A, Public Safety Use of Unmanned Aerial Systems Draft, policy approval. I believe we have Chief Aguilar on Zoom.
Yes. All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff, and our viewing audience. As I begin to go into this, section 12A, I just, I know that Madam City Clerk is trying to load the PowerPoint on, if you can just get that on, and then I'll move forward with the slides. While she's doing that, I just want to start off by saying, the recommendation the staff is asking for and requesting tonight is for city council to approve the recommended draft of the unmanned aerial systems policy. In the mid 2000s, I recall drafting policy for, earlier in my career, for unmanned aerial systems, and since 2005, there's been great success in implementing programs and the varieties of how the UAS are used. And it's done two things since then. One, it's helped protect our public, and two, it has also enhanced our public trust. Madam Clerk, if you could advance to the next slide. I'll continue to move on, Madam City Clerk can advance the slide, a couple slides forward. Just tonight, I just want to cover the staff report highlights, and, thank you, and then go ahead and advance to the next slide, please. The background on UAS, or more, more over what people call as drones, are effective in public safety, they deliver efficient information and responding to cost of service, and even those developing protracted events that we get called to and are part of. Research has been conducted from many UAS programs, not only in Ventura County, but across the state of California. We've received feedback from several departments within the county, as well as inquired to other programs, such as Chula Vista Police Department, who has a very broad-based and high-success program, using UAS not just in the realm of public safety for law enforcement specific uses, but other uses as well that have benefited city government. The UAS program integration supports police operations, and as I said, it opens up additional capabilities for city government. Next slide, please. In analyzing this, we have extreme weather conditions here in Ventura County, and especially here in the Santa Clara Valley, Santa Paula is vulnerable to wildfire and flood potentials. And it's really important for us to be able to forecast and have a better vision of what we need to do with our resources, such as guiding firefighting capabilities or response, looking at areas that we may have to engage with evacuation warnings, or even evacuation orders. UAS programs are proven efficient and successful in assessing public safety critical incidents as well. As you know, annually, I come to council and report on State Assembly Bill 481, which establishes the requirement to track acquisition of military equipment. UAS, or drones, are referred to as and considered military equipment. So as the years go by, and as I report out, if this policy is approved tonight, as I report out our military equipment, I'll also be reporting on our UAS or our drones as part of that list of equipment that we are currently using in our public safety processes. The policy has been drafted and established the standards for operation, certification, and training for designated employees in the UAS system. So on that note, I just want to remind everybody that in our paramilitary structure in law enforcement, this is again, the UAS program would have a structured environment for us to be successful. And that includes structured with a UAS commander oversight, a sergeant below him or her, pilots, a flight safety officer, and a flight observer. And these particular pieces to this policy are important because they keep us focused, they keep us focused on assessing potential dangers of using UAS in certain areas, but also make sure that we're staying focused with our operation and our missions. Next slide, please. So as you know, the strategic plan, in this two-year strategic plan currently, we have this particular equipment and program supports public safety strategic goal, section E, specifically creating an environment within the city in which our residents feel safe and which promotes the city as a location of choice for living, working, visiting, and recreating. Now, in the next two years of our budget cycle, there are no fiscal impacts. We will be purchasing soon our UAS equipment using Department of Justice supplemental law enforcement funding, and also a portion from our FEMA reimbursement. Next slide, please. So tonight, council, I bring you the options for this particular policy, draft policy approval. The options are do not approve the proposed draft policy. Next option would be to direct staff to modify the proposed policy. And the third option is give direction to staff as desirable. Next slide, please. I'd like to touch a little bit on the program policy. In the draft policy you have before you tonight, some of the key points are establishing UAS unit personnel and oversight, adhering to FAA approval for a certificate of authorization, or what is more commonly referred to as COA, training, operation, and also procedures, managing protocols for deployment, documentation, and data for all UAS missions. And also, UAS pilots' duties are required to provide safe and effective operations, practice observance of FAA regulations and certifications, and follow our agency procedures outlining this policy. Next slide, please. So among the uses I mentioned earlier that have benefited many public safety organizations throughout the state and even in the county, some of the authorized mission types, I'm just going to go quickly down the list, there's a couple of slides for this, so it's this slide and one other one, so I'm just going to go down the list and just live and roll off the list. These are the mission types I want our community and our council to understand that this, these are the kinds of incidents we'll be responding to and for seeking assistance with the UAS. Tactical operations, investigative support, area searches such as missing persons or even locating evidence, search and rescue, explosive device investigations, hazardous materials response, illegal fireworks deterrence, firefighting operation or fire investigation support. Next slide, please. Disaster or mass casualty event response or recovery, special events planning and management and monitoring special events, area searches, aerial surveying for GIS systems mapping, building and public works, infrastructure support, UAS regular and ongoing training, illegal fireworks deterrence, and mutual support, mutual aid to other jurisdictions when requested or required. And I'll run out the next slide and open up for any comments or questions council may have tonight on this policy.
Council members, are there questions? Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Just so I understand, Chief, what would be the area allowed, within city limits or outside city limits that involve an investigation involving the city? Just curious how far the limits of that could go.
So we get our authorizations, we're authorized to conduct UAS operations within the city. Anything outside the city, we would probably, we would more than likely request whatever other jurisdiction has that over that area.
Thank you.
Yes. I have a question. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation this evening. Carlos here. You know, having been a police officer for a long time, I'm all for equipment that makes the job of the police officers more effective and efficient. One thing I'm, and I was approached recently by a resident who was concerned, not concerned, but actually was for this program, but I was equally kind of concerned that there wasn't, or that we don't have a lot of people in the room, because as you know, whenever we've talked about surveillance cameras or drones in the past, we usually had a lot of people here concerned about their Fourth Amendment rights. And so seeing and reading this, this presentation and the policy, I see you've covered most of those areas, and I see that whenever you have somebody operating an unmanned aerial system, that there's got to be a flight plan. So that might eliminate in the future somebody alleging that police were misusing a, one of these devices, because there'd be a flight plan. So my question is, there is one bullet point on, under UAS pilot 610.4.3, and I just want a clarification, I looked it up, but it's the last bullet where it says, "UAS pilots may temporarily, be temporarily removed from flight status at any time by the UAS unit commander for reasons determined by the UAS unit commander. These reasons may include, but are not limited to, performance, proficiency, comma, and the like." And I thought the last comma is kind of all encompassing. So I know you're trying to cover all bases, but I just want to be careful about mission creep, you know, where we start off doing something, and then all of a sudden it progresses into something else without justification. So I'm sure that whoever's going to be in charge of this unit will have, you know, the protocols and policy written down, and obviously maybe even an operational plan. And that way, if there's ever any question, then obviously they can go back and see if it was followed. So I really don't have a question, I just want to say that I am just a little concerned that we don't have the public here tonight, but I do want to address that that has been a concern in the past, and I think this policy pretty much covers a lot of those concerns that I had reading it first.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Points well taken, and this particular bullet point is very important to us because it keeps us focused on what our missions are, and we will have no less than a supervisor on each of those missions that are part of the UAS team to make sure our mission and our commitment per policy is followed. And any- And any deviation from that will be dealt with at the particular time and place of the mission. And if we decide that this mission didn't go completely as we had intended the mission to be, we can make changes and remove any operators or any people who are on the team of the UAS program.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Crossway.
All right, just a couple of questions. I know you mentioned Chula Vista. I believe there's other cities in the county that also have similar policies. Could you speak to any other cities you're aware of off the top of your head that you know have them?
Yes, I know Ventura County Sheriff has had one. I was part of drafting that original policy years back. And also, Oxford Police Department also has policy, and also Sandy Valley Police Department, and also Ventura Police Department. And we have reviewed those policies and formed what we believe is appropriate and helpful to launch our program and make it successful.
Thank you. And then in terms of what would the process look like? It talks in here about the unit commander that you assign being responsible to establish that protocols are followed by monitoring and providing periodic reports to you. So what does that look like? How do they ensure that it's being, the policy is being followed properly?
So each mission has to be documented and archived, and those missions will be reviewed by myself after the commander has completed the mission that was, that was done by the staff, and I will be reviewing each of those missions.
Okay. And then in terms of the FAA Part 107 certificate, is how, what does that entail? Like, is that a, a one-day training? Is that a multi-week training? What does that look like?
I believe the training, last I checked, was a minimum of three days. I think it's up to five days. And there are two locations. One is further south out of the area, but the other location is here in the county in Camarillo. So we have the benefit of getting that training quickly and having it local as well.
Oh, that would be great if we could benefit from not having to send someone for several days far away. And then Councilmember Juarez, or Vice Mayor Juarez, sorry, touched on this a little bit, but for the benefit of the public, how, if they haven't read this policy, but they happen to be, you know, see this meeting back later, how is it that the policy, could you speak to how it, obviously I've read the policy, but can you speak to how the policy protects public, you know, their individual property privacy? Because there might be some people who are concerned about that.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Crossway, for that question. That, those, we want to make sure we protect everybody's rights and privacy. And the actual list of missions that are, that are provided in the policy here, if it's not one of those missions, we are not going to, we are not going to participate in any activity which would infringe on anybody's violation of their rights. So we stick to the plan. We stick together. For example, the commander comes to me and says, hey, we have a, an incident going on. We, we're searching for evidence, so we've had a violent crime take place. We, we need a UAS to come out and to get to an area we can't get to, but it's near, maybe near some homes, but it's in the hills. We will stay focused and know that, hey, where, where is the direction we were supposed to be going with us in? If we're not following that mission or that particular operation, then we're not following policy, and we will stop.
Well, and I think I saw it somewhere in there that, you know, there wouldn't be copies of if, you know, if you ended up with something that wasn't supposed to be, you know, you don't keep that data and some of those things, so. Then I also had a question. When it talks about assisting other agencies, all it talks about is needing the commander's approval. Does the other agency or jurisdiction not need to have their own policy? Just, so I was just curious about that, if it was in, since our policy applies directly to our jurisdiction.
So if, the only instance, or one of the instances I can see another agency requesting our assistance is if they're conducting an investigation and it leads to Ventura, or the city of Santa Paula, and they're asking for us to use a drone to continue with their investigation. So our, our commander would be linked with their command of their UAS program or their patrol watch commander to understand what, specifically what the mission is. And then, and only then, if we deem it necessary to deploy UAS in our city to assist another investigating agency, then we, then, then we would go ahead and, and offer that assistance.
Okay, so it's not referring to, you know, City X saying, hey, come over here and fly your drones here. It's, it's more if they were conducting an operation in town.
Yes, and because of the fact that most of the agencies in this county, including the other, the sheriff contract city, UAS is, is available virtually to all jurisdictions. Each city or each, each of the jurisdictions has their UAS program. So it would be unusual for us to be called to come over unless they had an extended estimated time of arrival to get their equipment out. But the way the program works is UAS is, is already equipped in patrol vehicles, through patrol cars throughout the county and all jurisdictions, and they have immediate accessibility to those, to those UAS equipment. And so it would be unusual for them to ask, hey, can you come over and help us right now? If, you know, and the, the only way what happens in the event they did not have an immediate access to UAS, say on, on the night shift when, you know, at 2:00 in the morning and they had an egregious crime and they're asking for mutual aid for a, a UAS, and we're the closest nearby assisting agency, that would be, you know, kind of out of the ordinary, but something we would consider.
Okay, great. And then one other question on the Section 10.7 for UAS data, where it talks about the ways not to transmit data, you know, it talks about not unofficially sending it by, you know, email, social media, news service. My one question is whether or not it says, it talks about instant messenger, but I wondered if we needed to add, for clarity, text message, since that's where some, you know, other agencies in other instances had gotten in trouble before with text messages. And so if it needed to just be explicit in there that you wouldn't, you know, unofficially text the data either. It shouldn't, it shouldn't need saying, but since it doesn't say it, I would feel more comfortable if we also specified that you shouldn't text it.
I think that's a, a very specific, and, and I think it's a good addition to the policy. I can add a text SMS slash phone SMS slash text messaging to that. Thank you.
Councilmember Cornejo.
I would just actually like to speak in favor of the policy with a, just to relay a situation where my son works on a search and rescue team in another county, and there was an elderly man who went missing, and they had the canine out, they had the search teams out, and they were successful in finding him in a field using the, the, the UAS. And it possibly saved his life, potentially could have saved his life. So the cost involved versus a helicopter search and that sort of thing is a huge savings in those types of situations. So it's not necessarily looking for criminals in which it would be a benefit as well, but also in just the search and rescue aspect of it, I think is really valuable. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Councilmember Cornejo. That, that's a great story to, to relay. And so our plan is to purchase a UAS for patrol and a UAS for investigative needs. So that when we train our people, there will be actually people who will be collateral assignment trained to operate the UAS who are on patrol. So we won't have to call anybody in to operate it. It's training those individuals, and our plan is one officer on every shift to be able to operate the UAS immediately and deploy it.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Chief, I have a follow-up, a comment and a question. I know there are some people in the community that were anticipating that this policy and the drones would be flying by the Fourth of July, and I kind of doubt we're going to be able to do that. But for the benefit of the public, could you please explain some of the challenges of using a drone for fireworks enforcement? I mean, because it's not just the operator operating the drone, it's going to be the support personnel in identifying those people, you know, lighting off the fireworks in the subsequent apprehension.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That, I specifically asked a few of our agencies in the research, and they have deployed UAS for Fourth of July. It's a little bit challenging to not, once they discover where it's, where it's at, and to get an officer there quickly to respond and provide enforcement. They've had some success with that, but again, it depends on the availability of how many officers are out there not answering other priority calls and/or extra staffing for Fourth of July. We plan to do extra staffing Fourth of July as well as dispatchers over the next, over this upcoming Fourth of July weekend. And once we deploy this, I hope in the next several months to get some more research done on, on the strategy of, successful strategies of police departments and fire departments utilizing UAS. Law Focus Fire Department has a good program and their strategy in not just locating the fireworks, but providing a deterrence through enforcement.
Thank you for that additional information, Chief.
So Chief, I'm all in favor of using technology as a tool to extend ourselves, where, you know, having eyes where you can't really know what's going on in the community, right? So it's a good tool for surveillance. We made investments in technologies like Axion. How does this drone connect to existing systems that we made investments in?
Thank you, Mayor. So the connection we have right now, so Axon is our body worn camera, ALPR is Flock Safety, we have that, great technology. Where the connection is with our UAS is this, when it speaks in the policy about archiving our data, those videos can be implemented into Axon, which is evidence.com, is where we archive all of our photo and video footage, including videos collected from the public. So there's not a direct connection to it, but as far as evidentiary purposes, evidence.com, Axon, is a very robust, accessible, and efficient way to put our videos for evidence purposes for any violation of crime or municipal code ordinance, fireworks violation.
Great, which is really extremely important so that we don't have multiple systems and run into that same problem again. My question to follow up with the council member mentioning, when another agency asks for assistance, who gets to make that decision? Who makes that call? And let me give you an example in this environment that we're, that we're in. Let's say you're contacted by ICE, and ICE wants to have you do surveillance at Limoneira to see who's actually working on site. Who makes that call whether that equipment is used and what jurisdiction, who has jurisdiction for our equipment?
So the UAS commander would gather the information and complete the request as far as, as getting contact information, and then he would notify myself, the chief, to make the decision. So ultimately, I would have that decision on an outside agency request. And again, it has to fall within the guidelines of our policy, what we would send or request UAS for on the incidents that we've listed in the policy. So that decision, final decision rests with the chief.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
And could I request that when you do so, you add the language to Section 610.7, UAS obtained data subsection B about the text messages or phone.
Say that again?
Do you want to do the motion and then she seconds it?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right, so I would move.
For efficiency sake.
I will, I will move approval of Item 12A, Public Safety Use of Unmanned Aerial Systems, UAS draft, draft policy, and then with the addition of language explicitly naming SMS slash text message as in the sentence about, unless for official business recordings of any type shall not be posted to or distributed via, yeah, to that section of list of things that we'd add that.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilmember Crossway. Is there a second?
All right, I will second.
All right, there's a second by Councilwoman Ornelas. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to 12B, discussion on potential Public Safety Committee options. Mr. City Manager, are you going to lead us on that one?
Our chief is prepared to do that, and I will chime in as well.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, tonight, staff recommends that the city council consider the options related to the public safety or police chief advisory committee and provide further feedback to staff through, to return with guidelines and parameters for the committee based on the council's consensus. Quickly, an overview on the background. The purpose of these types of committees can be to serve as, to serve as a bridge between the community and public safety entities, such as police and fire departments. Public safety committees encourage community input on services and issues, and I think it's good and beneficial that committee members typically made out of civilians and members of our community may review proposed policies, practices, and make recommendations for us to receive to the respective department head. This is good two-way communication and the members of our community. And again, it's for this particular aspect, this is a priority has been for me since I've been here to improve our trusted community engagement. We want to be more inclusive with the community and have them part of some recommendations and even some decision-making ideas. Public safety committees, they meet regularly, depending on the need, to discuss policies and topics that are, are critical to our community. A little history back here with a police chief advisory committee, in 2022, the chief of police selected a five-member committee representation from senior business, civic community, as well as at-large members. The community was designed as a sounding board, and it was for a means of getting community input on various items. However, the advisory committee was suspended with the departure of the former police chief. In 2023, the council adopted its two-year strategic plan, which included and called for the creation of a police chief's advisory board. At the end of February of 2025, or February 19th, the council meeting, council reviewed the proposed, or the proposal by Mayor Chavez to consider the establishment of a public safety committee. The council noted their willingness to have a further discussion on this topic and recommended it remain focused on police and not inclusive of fire or emergency preparedness, since we have a committee such as the Citizen Corps that was formed for the better purpose for fire services and preparedness. So for going into some of the analysis, a public safety advisory committee, just so everybody is clear on the definition, or police chief advisory committee can serve at the pleasure of either the council or the chief, based on established guidelines adopted by council or established by the police department. Committee members may also be selected through interviews and an open application and appointment process by council, or could be selected by the chief of police or panel of police personnel. Such a committee could help to provide input and recommendations to police personnel and community issues, policing practices, and community engagement. Now contrary, or in contrast, the oversight committees, on the other hand, have the authority to review complaints and investigations of misconduct, often with a focus of accountability and transparency, occasionally conducting investigations or even internal reviews. Typically, these are oversight committees that are placed after such things as consent decrees that have been issued to police departments by the courts, and an oversight function is typical due to allegations of misconduct within the agency. is typical due to allegations of misconduct within the agency. These oversight committees are often composed of retired judges, lawyers, or members of the law enforcement community, and his sister role often includes reviewing grievances, legal documents, or reports on use of force, et cetera. Our strategic plan has been right in line with this, this particular discussion on Citizen Advisory Committee. As far as the fiscal impacts, there are no increased fiscal impacts to conduct, facilitate, and coordinate the Public Safety Committee meetings. These members would be selected and volunteer their time for serving on the committee, and the only cost which would incur would be staff time based on the frequency of how many times we meet. So the option tonight, as I share with you, is while the council is under no obligation to establish some type of Public Safety Advisory or Oversight Committee, doing so would be consistent with the adopted strategic plan. Obtaining council direction one way or the other will help in our efforts to move this discussion forward. So I will take at this time further discussion and recommendations by the council. I am also here for additional comments or questions you may have.
Since I put the item on the agenda, I wanted to just refer to June 2023, the recommendation by the council to have a Police Chief's Advisory Board. I think that would be a great starting place for the chief to have some flexibility in being able to put out the call for residents to volunteer their time and have the chief lead the effort on getting that advisory board established so that we can meet our strategic objective of E5 on our last plan. That's kind of what I'm proposing, is giving the chief the opportunity to expand his level of support in the community through this advisory, Police Chief's Advisory Board, or Committee, however you want to call it. And the chief can make recommendations and have the support of this advisory committee if there's issues of public safety that need to be addressed.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, since it was something that we all had agreed to have in the strategic plan, and it got paused because, you know, we had some staffing things that needed to be addressed first, I would be in favor of us revisiting, bringing that back since that was something that we've been working on trying to have established for quite some time, and the chief can kind of see how it works out and maybe report back to us on, you know, if there's, if there's value that has been added from having that intentional group of, to directly give input.
Thank you, Councilmember Crossway. Thank you, Mayor. You know, we've had these discussions about oversight and advisory dealing with measure R, measure T, and I see in, as Councilmember Crossway had said, we discussed this a couple years ago, and I agree with the ability to be open and transparent and include the public input. I don't think we're at a point where it has to be looking for things that are going wrong, but more of an advisory. And Councilmember Crossway also shared to me that we kind of need to be cautious in making it a Brown Act committee so that we, it's not so structured and it's more fluid and open to what is needed in the community and the police department. So I totally agree with, as Mayor Chavez said also, that we agreed to have this come forward, and under the chief, he seems to have a good upper, or understanding of what is needed with his department, and this might give him some additional outside input and further public trust. That's my comment.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and I think as we have the definitions between advisory and oversight, I feel that oversight committee is almost like having another boss, and that disrupts the kind of order that we have in our organization without, at least as I foresee, any need at this point for investigative type of work. I do think the community outreach is very valuable, and I think the current PD organization is doing really well with that, but if the chief feels that it can be even better by doing a more formal outreach advisory committee, then I would support that. But likewise, the concern of creating an appointed committee means minutes, notice of meetings, a lot of extra administrative burden on staff that I'm not sure in the end is going to achieve what the point would be, which is an interaction with community as far as their ability to meet the needs of the community and listen to the concerns of the community. So I would be comfortable leaving it in the hands of the chief to come back with us with maybe an idea of how to create it, how to make appointments and that sort of thing, or invite people to be a part of this committee. I think it's, it helps with the trust with the community that they are being offered the opportunity to speak and interact on another level with our PD. So I do like that idea, but not heading towards a formal committee or oversight, I don't see that as a necessity right now, so.
And just to clarify for any members of the public who are like, well, why wouldn't you want it to be a formal committee? Because then two of you couldn't talk with another person about public safety issues, right? And so it, then it really limits those who are on the committee from really being able to get, because, I mean, we, it was a problem that we ran into with the youth advisory committee, right? They go, oh, we want to do a town hall. Oh, well, we can't really do a town hall. Oh, well, it's going to take, you know, we have to agendize for two, you know, for two of us to meet as a subcommittee to plan. It became unwieldy, right? And so it just, by not having it be some, a committee that the council appoints, it will give the chief a better opportunity to interact with the committee and the community, and maybe the community can help organize, you know, a town hall or a coffee or, you know, or give feedback for where would be good locations to interact with the community, you know, that kind of thing in a way that then isn't limiting for them to be able to really help, help the police department to really have a good relationship with the community. So that, that's where the, that, yeah. So I just wanted to clarify that if someone was sitting at home thinking, well, why not? So that would be the reason.
So it sounds like we have a consensus to let the chief go and develop chief's, what is it called? The Police Chief's Advisory Committee. And I know that retired Chief Odear is waiting to be asked, so that's definitely one person. I know I also spoke to, oh, Sal Luis Melgar being such a supporter is another individual. So there's a lot of folks in the community that, that I think could serve on this advisory committee, and you can have a task force of sorts to build stronger relationships and find ways to move forward, so. Looks like we have a consensus on that.
So would it be the council's desire then for us to develop just some basic framework and guidelines and then bring that back before we start that invitation?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Yep.
I would maybe suggest that it not be too restrictive on its membership, though, because it should be, you know, I think it was mentioned before, you have to have a senior, you have to have a youth, you know, that becomes restrictive sometimes, and so I'd like to hope that there would be some flexibility in that. You look for a wide representation of the community, but not have to have it fit into slots or categories. Might be easier to find membership.
Go ahead, Council.
And I think the, part of the benefit of having it, not that we're necessarily even approving it, but just having it come back for you to share what you're thinking, part of the benefit of that, if there's a rough outline, is, you know, in 20 years, you won't be the chief, right? And, and so having that framework so that we don't have to start from scratch, you know, going forward, I think would be helpful.
Yes, sir.
All right, I want to poke the bear a little bit. And again, I don't want to be limited to, like, having to select through districts because that would limit who the chief would want as the best people for the position, not where they live. That's just my thoughts.
We'll let the chief come up with the formula. All right, thank you so much, Chief, appreciate your time on this.
Thank you very much, Council. I think this is going to go a long way to continue our transparency, and when I say advocacy, I don't mean advocacy for police, I mean advocacy that our committee members would keep our department on a straight and positive path in helping us do our job.
Wonderful. All right, let's move to agenda item 12C. Take care, Chief, thanks.
Have a good anniversary.
Consideration of tender offer of Limco stock. Three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Put the timer on. This is an unusual opportunity. The city was presented back in April with a tender offer for shares of stock in a limited partnership that was gifted to the city. We don't know exactly when, but many years ago, and sometime after the 70s. And that stock is part of a, basically a limited liability partnership that owns a farm for agricultural purposes that's kind of a sister company to Limoneira. It's in our community center endowment that these shares are held, and for quite some time, it was very productive because the city would share in getting a nice dividend in the range sometimes of about $10,000. The value of the city's holdings is about 100, just over $100,000.
104, 106.
Yeah, 104,000. And so that was a pretty handsome dividend return until it wasn't because both with COVID and with a downturn in production for lemons, which is what had been on the farm for about 40 years, the dividend continued to decline, and that's represented in the fiscal impact portion of your report.
So it's 1488, 1,488?
Last year.
In 2016, it was 10,416.
So what Limoneira Company is proposing is a conversion of that, those lemon orchards to almost entirely all avocado, which would be much more productive and eventually carry a much weightier dividend, I would assume. However, it represents a transition period. So two things happen. Number one is the current production disappears, and then avocados are planted, and that means that they're planted at a capital expense, which will wipe out the dividend during that period. And it also means that the production from the avocados won't start to really occur for about five years. And that's probably best case scenario. Limoneira is suggesting it probably be a span of five to seven years that we would see little to no dividend in the short term. So we have the opportunity to tender or liquidate our shares, all 1,000 and, what is it, 44 of them? 14, thank you, 1,488 of them, at a price of $70 per share. That is at a market value that's 15% above market, so there's a premium that they're adding to encourage people to do that tender. You're under no obligation to sell. They're comfortable with there still being partners that hold on to their shares, but they're looking to raise capital and make this conversion. And so it's really up to the council whether you would like to do one of three things: tender all of the shares at this time, tender part of the shares and keep some of the shares, or not tender any of them. The advantage of holding on to them is that there could be much greater returns in the future with avocados, as well as, this land is largely, this farm is largely surrounded by the incorporated part of Ventura. So unlike something that's out in the middle of nowhere, there's a lot of development potential. Now, it would be subject to the SOAR initiative and a SOAR vote, it would be subject to annexation processes, reasonable to think that could take 10 years or more, and could be never approved or never pursued. However, if it was, it's just important to note that the value of the shares at that time could be five to 10 times what they would be today. So this wasn't a decision I felt I should be making alone without airing it publicly and giving the council an opportunity to chime in. And then the last thing that I would share, since there's 20 seconds left in my three minutes, is that the endowment is for the community center and for upkeep of the community center. We haven't really been relying on the proceeds from that endowment, although it's foreseeable at some point we would want to. There's over $600,000 in that fund, and a few years ago, when we were only making 1% on our money, it wasn't doing much. Now, of course, we have Chandler Asset Management handling our portfolio, it's more actively invested, and we're earning more like 4%. So there's value in having the cash now and getting a return and not waiting the seven years. On the other hand, the city is here forever, and we're not really in any rush to have to have this money. We're not counting on it in any way. So it's really at your discretion what we do. And I will end there. The city attorney helped review some of this, as our finance director did, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, a few years ago, I had, we had stock in Limoneira, and we sold it, and that eliminated my conflict, so I can speak on this. And I'm glad I can, because is, there's a plaque at the community center, and I don't recall the name of the people, but it's, I'm sure they're the people that donated the money. And my question is, do we know what their long-term restriction after was one? I know, obviously, it says it should be used for the community center, but were they expecting that someday we would sell it for one-time money, one-time money, and then it's gone? Or was it to be perpetually gaining some kind of interest? And, you know, we're at a point right now where everything's down, everything's low, and as you said, we don't need to sell it. My thoughts are on this, quite frankly, is if we don't need to sell it, why are we selling it? And why are we going to sell it for one-time money? If and when the property gains value or the dividends start getting better, well, then it's a plus for the city. So my thoughts would be personally, keep it, and let's see where this, where this goes in the near future with the economy. And that's my thoughts, thank you.
I don't really know what the answer is. I've gone around and around on this. You know, it's interesting, because if we were able to get at least a 4% return, so I did, I was trying to compare just rationally both things. So if you put the whole amount into the endowment and we were able to get at least a 4% return, the average, or that what you would generally expect to get in interest every year would be about $4,200. In the last 10 years, our average has been $5,728, even with the years that have been bad. However, if we go five to seven years without any interest, then over a 15-year period, it drops to $3,369 average per year. So I don't know, you know, you, it's sort of a gamble either way, right? You either, you can put it in there and we can probably make about $4,200 a year, or we say, well, we might make nothing for the next several years, but there's a potential larger gain down the road. I don't 100% know what the right answer is, but I just thought I would share the, you know, the mental gymnastics that I did trying to think this through to, as we try to decide what the best, and I don't know, we don't have anything that says whether or not there was, you can't, right?
The council members, the research that we did led us to the formation of Limco, so we've read through all of that, we've read through their tender offer. Ms. Ramirez has looked at the endowment fund and the holdings of it. We have yet to find what the restrictions might have been on the gift. And it's not to say that we don't have those somewhere, but there was a time limit on getting this determination because we only have till the end of June, and so we just haven't had the time to research it. And honestly, if the council was like, no, let's just hold the shares, then, you know, there's even less urgency in researching something. But we are, we are eager to find out if there are certain restrictions that were placed.
Thank you. What I might recommend, Peggy Kelly, it's a wealth of information. Thank you. What I might recommend, and Peggy Kelly is a wealth of information. The other day, I just, out of the blue, asked her if she knew anything about Hudson Way, which is the alley right over here in the 1,000 block of North Alley. And she told me the whole story about it, who he was, you know, the whole history. And then, when I was researching about the time capsule, she had it went through the archives. So, you know, one of the community center built in 85? No.
Well, it was given over to the city from the fire department, because it was formerly a fire maintenance and fire facility. And I think that was in the, yeah, mid to late 80s, I believe.
I mean, I would recommend, I mean, I'll do it if you want, get ahold of Peggy Kelly and say, what do you know? And I'll get the names of the plaque and say, tell me what you can find out. Maybe there's something, an article about it.
Are we supposed to get a decision by the end of the month, which is next week?
Yeah. If, if we want to participate in the tender offer, we only have till the end of June to inform them.
Well, presumably, we also have to adopt our budget before the end of June. Could we make a final decision that night?
The meeting on the 29th, on 23rd or the 30th, no, 30th?
Yeah, I mean, we could easily re-agendize it for then. I don't know that I'll have the capacity to get you any more information. I mean, outside of, outside of how the fund for the community center, like if there's restrictions on use.
It just sounds like there's a lot of factors that, of things that we don't know that in the future. SOAR being one of those things. The state of avocados in 20 years, like, are those, I mean, don't we need the money now?
I mean, in some ways, you're participating in the farming industry, which we all know is very volatile.
Exactly. They could be moving that overseas.
Meetings every year, you know.
Avocados take more water. You know, with how we're positioned with climate change, that could have an impact on our water resource.
The tender offer did note that they do have water rights. So in terms of water availability for that 220 acres, there's not an immediate threat to that. But to your point, there's a lot of uncertainty with farming. I mean, you could consider a 50-50 type of thing.
Keep halfy, keep half, and then?
What happens if we don't sell now? Then we can't sell, or?
The offer expires. That doesn't mean there couldn't be a future offer, but I believe that there would be opportunities down the road if we ever wanted to sell it either privately to someone else or back to Limonera.
It's going to take it some time for them to remove all the existing lemon grows and then replant them.
Yeah, they're, they're expecting that'll be about a year and a half.
To your point, farming is not our cup of tea anymore. It's changing.
I just think about what Vice Mayor said, whoever gave the money, if they had, like, specific things they'd want followed or seen done with the money. So I get both sides. But to hear this now and have to have an answer by the end of the month, that's pretty rough.
I haven't said anything, because I don't know either. This is a tough decision, because it is, you know, stock is always risk, that, and that's the, that's what we have to measure here, is, is it may be a long-term gain, long-term great, great idea to be a part of this. Short-term, we can use the funds, but then the funds are gone, because they're spent and probably spent, even if it's on the community center, which is what the purpose was for those funds. I'd like a little time, even if I just haven't decide, you know, come up with a, I still don't know. I'd like another week just to see if we can find out a little more information, just even individually as to the purpose, and actually think about this a little bit. But, I mean, the fact, I, you know, I serve on this, the basin pumpers. They have water, you know, so that, that's really a huge advantage for any, any type of prospect. So that, that, that bodes well for them. But I'd hate to make, I'm just not sure I could make a decision today, even having read through this, I'm just not sure. So.
Before you do that, let's get some-
I just wanted to throw out there that, well, it's, this is a confidential document, so it's not been shared publicly, but the offer to purchase also includes the option to request an extension from the purchaser to go beyond the June 30th deadline, but it is the purchaser's sole discretion.
Could we ask?
Even if we could have until our July meeting?
Right.
Which is only a couple of days after the end of the month, but at least it would give us a little bit more time.
I'd be happy to ask that.
Thank you. And I would, I would request that I be given just a few days to reach out to three historians that I know that could provide some, hopefully, additional information on the wishes of the family that donated the money. And if I don't find anything, then that might help them into, might make the decision. If we do learn something, that might help make the decision, but then we'll have at least that much more information.
The time capsule, it says 72, 75. Maybe they have a secret document.
Maybe, yeah, invisible ink, like the Declaration of Independence.
Okay, so you have enough instruction?
So re-agendize it for July 2nd, try and get the extension, and-
Also do some investigating, also potentially ask for an extension.
And then if they can't, if they won't extend it, though, then do we need to try to-
I could put it on June 30th, yeah. And then the final thing I, will now escape me. Let's see. Oh, that the tender offer, as the city attorney noted, is confidential. But if any of you'd like to read through it, it's quite fascinating, actually. It's pretty robust, but I have a copy in my office if you'd like to come in and look at it.
And I just wanted to say, everybody, thank you for that consideration to, a little more time to learn a little bit more. Thank you all.
All right. Next up, we're going to jump over to budget workshop. We left off-
I think to do that, you'll need to adjourn tonight's regular meeting.
So question for the council members, is there something pressing on reports?
There is at least one item that I do, would like to, just because I've seen it on social media that, in the last couple of days.
Yeah. Can we just keep it really brief for reports? And we'll start with Council Member Crossway.
Yeah.
We have a budget together.
I did want to mention at the VCTC meeting, there's other stuff that I'll, I might pull up to the next time we meet, just because I would like to share, but the, from the VCTC meeting, there's been questions around the Ferris Lane Bridge, and that's been resurfacing again on social media. And so I just wanted to clarify, they had hoped to already have done the construction on that bridge. It's not the city. It is, and it's not actually directly VCTC, it is Sierra Northern that will be doing those repairs to that bridge in the Texas Lane neighborhood. But their contractor that they work with to do those repairs has been unavailable. So they were hoping to do it in June. It's now expected to happen in September. And what, what the repairs to that bridge, they are going out on a regular basis, at least weekly, and inspecting the bridge to make sure that it is still safe, because I know there's been a lot of concern there. But there, when they do repair it, it's going to make it six to eight inches taller. So there will be more clearance under that area. So I just wanted to, some people thought, oh, well, when's the city going to fix it? And so I just wanted to clarify that that is going to get fixed. They were hoping to do it this month. It's been pushed back to September, but everything else here should be able to wait until our next meeting.
Thank you. I just want to mention two events. The state of the city was really well-done in a situation where it had to be by state determination. We couldn't combine with the chamber fundraiser. So it was a big problem and a big dilemma, and I, and everybody said it actually turned out better. Both events are better, is what I was hearing. So, well done on, on how that was executed. And just also, just to, because I'd like to mention before too much time passes, that the Rose Garden dedication to Gary and Nancy Nasle Road was, was beautiful and very, very much appreciated by the family. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Just one quick thing. Monday, June 16th, we, I wanted to say thank you to staff and everybody that was involved with the unveiling or opening of the time capsule. There was a little over 100 people there. The mayor spoke, he read the letter from then John Melton in 1975. And now, as we, we mentioned that day, the artifacts are now on display in, in the Hall of City Hall in two glass cases. So if you get a chance, please come down and see some artifacts from 1975. And we're going to be burying another one to be open in either 2073 or 2075. Thank you.
I don't have anything to report.
The clerk reminded me that we actually agendized budget workshop follow-up, so I was, I stand corrected. You can move into that item now.
So the first budget workshop is on a simple video?
That's okay. I think you can just continue to roll as part of this. Yeah.
So that's under special. And we left off in human, no.
Finance.
Finance.
Before we get into the actual budget, just on the narrative, I assume recon, budget, bank recons are-
Bank reconciliations.
Yeah. So if we could just write that out, so that if a member of the public decides they need some bedtime reading, and that's on budget page 43 or packet page 51.
All right, finance.
Oh, also a question on the next page on the budget commentary. It says year two, chair water dispenser services.
Yes. So we are one of the few departments, this area, that doesn't have a type of water dispenser, probably the only department, actually. We were getting our water from the filter tap, and we were hoping to get water service. So it would be the reverse osmosis that is in other, in other departments.
Right. But should, is, are chairs an item and water dispenser an item? Because I don't know what, do you have a water dispenser in your chair?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, they should be separate. I understand. Yes, yes, yes.
Because the other, other items-
There's a column missing.
Chairs, you know, X number of chairs and water dispenser services. And I'm like, what is chair water? That sounds fancy.
Yes. I see, I see.
So just to clarify the narrative, what page are we on? It's either packet page 52 or budget page 44. And it's in the budget commentary, near the, the third line from the bottom.
The most notable thing I would, I would say in our department is that the business license, accounting specialist, that also deals with animal licenses and accounts receivable and the many things, that is still being funded 70% for those, those purposes. But as we had mentioned before, the heavy period is really, you know, November through March. And what we're looking to do is distribute 30% of that to water, because with all of the increased homes and accounts, we need additional help, but we don't necessarily need additional bodies. So we just think that we can utilize that person and be more efficient and just to help out. So water will be funding a portion of that, really mostly to help during last day to pay and, and billing months, billing periods of the month, so a couple of days out of the year, out of the month.
And then right above that, actually, can you clarify when it says, I don't even know how you pronounce Hint Litter, that one, and De Yamas Associates for audits? How is, how are those audits different than the annual audit?
So HCL, they're sales tax audits in that they review-
Those are the sales tax audits.
Yes.
Could we clarify for sales tax audits, then? I just think that that would be, because otherwise, it looks like we're paying for the audit twice, which I know we're not, but I think that would be a helpful clarification.
Got it. For Department 2001? What page is that?
Page 53. Do you have your year-to-date activity for 2425? I mean, we're almost two weeks away, right? We budgeted $799,000.
I'll give you one, give me one second.
I went to page 53 of the budget, not 53 of the packet, so.
So it looks, it looks like the savings, yes, because our audit gets posted towards the end of the fiscal year. So that's an additional $30,000 right there. We, we may, we will have some full-time salary savings, but I believe there was one line item where we're going to need a bit of that salary savings, ah, professional services. That is for our, our temp staffing that's been covering. So I think we'll have some savings, definitely not 100,000, but maybe 20,000?
So the major increase for 25, 26, and 26, 27, where that's coming from major salary increases?
No, you'll notice the, you'll notice the unfunded accrued liability is going up by $90,000. That's all due to that redistribution that we had discussed earlier. We do have, we're not a, a big department, so our requests, we do have some funding requests for, for furniture. I think that's $10,000. But no, the majority of those, that increase from 800 to 945 is 100,000 due to the UAL.
Yeah, that's crazy.
But it's not an overall increase, it's just a redistribution.
And then on the professional slash contract, contractual services line, what, 5-2002-201? The 121 and 124, what, what contract, which contractual services are those? Because I only see, it, it's significantly higher than what it has been.
It's, it's significantly higher than what it was in fiscal year 2223, because the audit, the audit charges were charged either before or after. So that year is inappropriately reflected of a lower amount. The next year has the 84,000, and then this year, we're already at 73,000. So it is primarily our audit services, but we have a few other things on there. And sir, do you have the narrative, 2002, page 44? So we've listed out the, the HCL, the property tax. Chandler asset is another increase from prior older years. So I can definitely get you that breakdown, that exact breakdown, because we do have it broken out. And I apologize.
That's okay. I was just, I was going through the numbers on the budget commentary and trying to figure out how they added up to-
The 133.
And I couldn't quite get into-
Yeah, we do, we do a balance on the budget commentary of giving more information than the line items show, but also not inundating you with all of the detail. But we can definitely expand that. So let me write that down. Yes. The 70% for business license that Measure R was comfortable with.
Sorry. Anything else with finance?
Oh, yes. One general budget question, because the, where are we at in getting our updated overhead cost allocation and fee schedule? Because I assume this makes the assumption based on our current cost, no, it does not.
No. Both are done. Both will be presented to you on July 2nd. We have incorporated those into the new budget. The only variance was that we maintained the fleet services allocation, because it's historically been included. So I did keep that number, and it wasn't in the recommendation. So that's something that we'll discuss, but we're still comfortable with what was presented.
Okay. So the overhead cost allocations that are in this budget are based on the new...
Yes. And they're conservative, because there's other funds that weren't included that council could improve, but because traditionally they weren't, we didn't include them.
Okay. Thank you.
And the good news is the recommendations with the updated numbers were largely similar to what we were, what we had been doing.
To the ways that we had modified what we'd been doing previously.
Well, what we had done, because Christie, if I can speak for her, never felt fully comfortable. And so we just kind of froze that amount. It's probably a good thing we did, because if we had done upward adjustments, we might then have to downwardly adjust.
That's, that was what I was referring to.
Yes. We did make some adjustments more recently, but those were, again, moderate and not reflective of the actual increases that were occurring in the budget.
I've been very appreciative, even though we've been waiting for the overhead cost allocation of the finance director's proactive steps to make sure that we didn't end up in a pickle when the study was finally done. So we're very happy.
Anything else on finance? We're going to jump over to community development. Thank you.
If it's council's desire, consistent with your comments from this afternoon, we'll propose moving the Heritage Valley Tourism Bureau contribution into the Economic Development section, as well as the funding for the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, go ahead.
One question on, I'm trying to even tell what exactly, under non-departmental, packet page 57, budget page 49, I'm trying to tell what, it's the section 5-7501? What, what non-departmental is that exactly?
That, that is a lack of training from your finance director to her staff to explain, well, which one exactly? Because 750, there was, I'm thinking of revenues.
Well, this is, because it had utility electric and utility gas in there, and those are no longer in there, but then there's unfunded liability. And so I'm just not sure what that, I'm not sure what that section under non-departmental...
So that one...
It's a, it's a budget fund 100, but it just says non-departmental, and I can't quite... I couldn't figure out by telling, looking at this, what it was and why it would have had utility and not have utility now.
And your city manager asked the same question, and we did have a follow-up on that, and it looks like it wasn't addressed. So I'll make sure to follow up on that with the Public Works Director.
Okay. I just want to make sure that whatever that was ended up somewhere, and I was having a hard time figuring out where it ended up. And also if there, if it is something, like I, if it's like citywide things or versus, it would be helpful if there was something to clarify what, like, is it every city building? Or is it, like, it just was unclear when I was going through here, trying to figure out what they, what it was. Because then there's also a random, like, vehicle fuel line, but then there's other vehicle fuel lines in other budgets, so.
I'm going to guess it's street lighting, but I'm going to write a note to include it in budget commentary.
Okay.
Anything else on community development?
Just a question on the, there's an ARPA section, and it has legal advertising at 200,000 and 100,000? Do we, and that's under Community and Economic Development?
That, that's your general plan update.
So it's under ARPA, the next section is general...
Oh.
It's just deceptive, because your eyes want to show the ARPA fund. I'm on.
Oh.
He's talking to you.
ARPA is above, this is miscellaneous.
Correct.
Deposits. Okay. So, so this is, this is what...
Those are the funds from the general plan impact fee that is going to fund your municipal code update.
Okay. And it says legal advertising? So are those all the public notices?
Correct.
That's how much it's going to cost in public notices?
Well, keep in mind that every ordinance change has to be advertised for the Planning Commission, and then it has to be advertised twice for the city council, once beforehand and then once it's published.
So the more large sections of that that we can do together, the better?
That probably helps a bit. Yep.
Okay.
And then there's also the legal publishing of the actual code itself. So there's a separate cost for, we use a company for codification that's called American Legal Publishing, I think. And, and so we're entering, we'll be entering into a new contract with them that goes above our normal, like, $5,000 a year that we pay them to keep our code books up.
Anything else on community development? We're jumping over to police.
Should we add the development of a public safety committee to the 25, 26, 26, 27 priorities?
Police chiefs, public safety committee.
Sure.
Or advisory committee, or whatever it ends up being called, but...
Part of the strategic goals, or, yeah.
It says, launch a citizen advisory panel. That's already in there.
Oh, it is.
Under a different name. That's why we didn't pick it up.
Yeah, let's amend the language to be consistent.
Yeah.
What page is that?
67 of the packet. Second to, under top priority, second to last bullet point.
Oh, yes.
It's just a different name. That's why we didn't recommend it.
Where are you looking?
Launch a citizen advisory panel to foster strength in relationships.
Turn your mics on?
I think we can leave them on. That's okay.
I'll just leave it on.
Just as a reminder, just leave your microphones on.
I'll leave it on, yeah.
Unless you're about to sneeze.
Page 59, or 67 of the packet.
Which bullet?
Second to last.
Second to last. Up here, the section above, second to last.
Oh, okay.
It just says it in a different way.
All right. So then, yeah, just reword that.
That's why we didn't pick it up, because it didn't say it the day we were studying it.
Okay.
Do we need to add the drones in there somewhere?
We certainly could, now that council's given the green light to the policy.
Thank you.
And then, can you, how did we deal with overtime? Because there's some of these police budgets that have had overtime in the past that don't have overtime...
We have a quick answer.
Yes.
Okay.
Both overtime and part-time are very difficult to break out. And in the off chance that council was going to have us redistribute personnel again, we, there wouldn't have been enough time to do that, but both of those will be broken out by the respective departments in the final budget.
And so the short answer, I believe, is that we parked it all in patrol.
Yep.
For now. So we have identified overtime expenses. It will get distributed, but right now it's all under patrol, which...
Most. I believe 22,000 is under admin.
Good job on cutting it in half, in 24, 25.
Yeah. The, you know, anytime you have major shortage of staffing, you're going to have increases in overtime. So that's a demonstration of some of the stability that we've had, and we still have a little ways to go. There's still positions we'd like to fill.
One comment over here. We have made improvements in getting, recouping our training money, right? But it's still in arrears?
We've made, we've made recruitments. Allison has done a great job of putting in more post-reimbursements. But really, what we've recouped is from past years, because they're so slow.
Thousand arrears.
Yeah. And, and...
For canine expenditures, why is it that we're not budgeting anything for 25, 26, 26, 27?
You should see it down in Measure R, because they were comfortable with those, covering those costs at 12,000.
And then I did ask the finance director beforehand, but so, just to clarify, on the Slesa funding, in the final version of the budget, will there be funding there? Or we didn't request it?
No. The chief will provide additional...
So when we have the, when we get the final budget, there will be...
184,000, well, 174,000, because there's 10,000 in there right now.
Yeah, because it talked about it, and I'd ask, because it had talked about it in the narrative, but then it wasn't in the actual budget. So I just wanted to specify that that will be in the final version.
Oh, yeah. Overtime? Council member, was that on the patrol division?
It is.
The, wherever the Slesa line was. It is...
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Got it.
It's there, and it has a call-out later in its own, just for...
Yeah. Its own page.
Right. So it has its own page also, so both of those spots, it will need to be inserted. Because right now it just says there's $10,000.
Thank you for that catch.
The Slesa call-out is packet page 88. And then there's the, I think it's part of the patrol budget also. Those are the two places.
And actually, I just saw in here on page 75 of the, 75 of the document with 67 of the packet, it does have the implement an unmanned aerial vehicle to assist with significant property crimes. So it just needs to be changed to, in progress or to be, however the wording is.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, say that page again.
67 on the, which is which? 75 on the agenda packet and 67 on the document packet.
Uh huh.
Yeah, the UAV.
Right at the bottom of the page?
Yeah.
67 in the middle? It wasn't called the UAV in his policy.
Yeah. But here's, yeah, UAV.
It's a UA, what?
S?
Yeah, UA.
Yeah, yeah, US.
Yeah.
So just, maybe we just update the correct language to call it a UAV, called it in the policy.
So we've added the $130,000 for the Humane Society in here, right, for the two years?
Yes.
Yes.
Animal regulations.
And that is on page, I think it's 87, 84? Yes. And that contract is going to come to you on July 2nd.
As a side note, I was asked by someone on Oxtard City Council, just our, what the situation was, because Oxtard spends about $3 million on animal services. So they're looking for ideas. They're a much larger city, but...
They don't have a kennel. There, right? Are we okay with police?
Yeah, I don't have anything else.
Right? All right, Dale. Public Works. Let's see.
I like it there.
On the crosstown pipeline going across the bridge, so it's going to go over the new bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, is this turned on? Yeah. Okay. Yes. It will actually go through the bridge.
Okay.
Where are we budgeting for an engineer?
Yes.
Yes. The budget reflects full staffing levels. What we've been doing, because obviously we're not going to have an engineer come July 1st, what we've been doing is doing transfers of the funds associated with that to pay for the contract with M6, at such time as we hire someone, which hopefully will be sooner than later.
What line item would that, what fund would that come from? Because there'll be more on the, on the street side and also with, I guess, community development?
Would it be streets, admin, and engineering?
Yeah.
So the, so the city, so the city engineer, so the Public Works Director and Assistant Public Works Director are split between different funds, but they're primarily, I believe, in the 511, 5011 Engineering Division, which should be at the start of the budget. But they are split between general funds, water, sewer primarily, so.
They don't seem to be in 5011. They seem to be in 5, 5021.
There you go.
You're close.
Yeah.
You were off by one.
There you go.
Yeah, because that's a much larger salary number. I'm pretty sure it's in there.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think, I think we've, it, just to reiterate, I think that we're all in agreement that making every effort to get an in-house...
Engineer.
Engineer is, we know it's a priority for staff and...
It is.
It is very much supported by council as well.
Great. We love Bob.
Oh, yeah. I'm not, I'm not saying anything, but it's just, it's, there's...
We need an in-house engineer.
Right.
That's just all there is to it.
Yeah. There, there are...
Bob is expensive.
That's right.
Well, and there's just, there's, it's a public, it's a community service, you know...
Well, to have someone there every day or almost, you know, that would be a great advantage to our city if we could, so.
And then when there's emergencies or there's...
It kind of becomes a choke point, too.
Yeah.
And the same with the associate engineer. There's, there's things that we need someone here all the time to do, and community development would be able to move a lot faster if public works, engineering could move faster. We recognize that.
And then just on the CIP, somewhere there's something about, you know, the transition to LEDs or, I don't... So I know we talk about the streetlights, but are we just in the CIPs talking about sort of the ornate ones? Because I know that there's also that agreement that we have with Edison where some of the streetlights were transitioned to LEDs, and I don't remember how long that horizon was. I don't know if at some point we could get an update on kind of what that horizon was and if at some point, I, I just can't remember the details of that agreement.
All of the lights have been converted.
Right.
The arrangement with Edison was to then work it into a different rate structure for us, and that lasts for, I think, yeah, like 10 or 12 years or something.
Yeah, that's what I couldn't remember is how long we were into that.
Down a little bit.
Right, before the price would, what happened was in, you know, we didn't have the capital to replace the incandescent bulbs with, or halogen or whatever was in there with LEDs, and so we did an agreement with Edison on the poles that they have control of, where they switched them over to LEDs without us having to pay to switch them. But then they sort of amortized over time that cost into our rate so that we weren't really paying more, but we weren't getting a savings on the saving in energy. So I was just, if at some point we could get an update, maybe a public works director update, on how much time is left on that piece.
Okay.
There was a list of capital improvement projects that had no, no funding available, right?
Mm-hmm.
Not that that's going to go in the budget necessarily, but can you just share, not, not now, but just email that information to the council, just to see, make sure that, I guess, what's on there? If there's things that, if funding comes, then things can be put up, moved, moved forward and prioritized?
Yes, and it should already be in your budget on page 117 and 116 is where you'll start seeing the unfunded portions of projects or entire projects. That's where we have all of the unfunded, since this is, this particular table is by funding source.
On the agenda packet, whenever it is?
Agenda packet 123, that's where it starts and it goes on to 124. Also, within the detail itself, we tried to put all of the unfunded requests in, in red as well.
So on here, it says that what's unfunded is Teague Park restroom project.
A portion of it. So if we go to the Teague Park project, we'll probably see partial funding and then partial unfunded.
How come there's no dollar sign here?
Are you looking at the...
123, 10 dash the UF?
Page 123 UF, which one? Teague Park?
Teague Park restroom project. So if it's partially unfunded, shouldn't we know what the difference is?
Yes, and you, oh, I see.
It doesn't tell us.
Oh, yes, that may have just been a mistake.
Okay.
We'll make sure to clean that up.
The intention with that project is to utilize development impact fees in addition to the state funding that we have, and we just, we just asked the state for an extension. We don't have the development impact fees in the bank yet, and that's been part of the holdup. However, hopefully council's going to approve an arrangement with People's Place on July 2nd. Seems like everything's happening on July 2nd. And, and it won't be long after that before they'll be required to pay their development impact fees, and there's around $600,000 due to park, park fees. So we'll be able to really get that project going quickly.
Yeah, more than likely that was a timing issue where we thought it was going to be unfunded, and then we realized the diff impacts were going to occur. So we'll clean that up.
So the total unfunded is how much?
In year one, 6.9 million and 7.8 million in year two. That's on page 124 of the agenda. It's the last yellow row.
So we've just been accruing all these things since that fiscal year?
No, that's the total request of new money for that year.
6.9, right?
Mm-hmm, and then the next year they're asking for 7.
So the, I know that there, Senator Schiff was able to put the crosstown pipeline in appropriations, and we'll see if it comes out in the big beautiful bill. If that somehow happens, it's, it's, it's in here, right? Like, that would be the funding source for, for that piece, and that would move it out of here?
I have to look at the crosstown pipeline.
Because I know we've been asking for that for a long time. Where is that pipeline?
124.
124, the total unfunded. Where do we have the crosstown pipeline?
Mayor, are you saying that you see crosstown pipeline?
No, I'm trying to find out, where, where is it? Because that would be unfunded, right?
I believe there's some, some funding for it.
So if, if there's some existing funding but no new requests, then it wouldn't show up on this chart yet, as we had mentioned earlier?
I'm looking to see if it's...
It's mentioned on page 90 for the design piece, but I don't see anything...
More than likely there was no new.
In the actual budget. That's the only place that crosstown shows up, is just on the project design. I did a word search of the packet. I don't see crosstown pipeline anywhere else.
That moves faster than I can.
But it shouldn't be in here, no? Like, we want to have that as a...
If there's an existing budget, it will be in there, and either way, we'll make sure to follow up.
Okay.
I've written add crosstown pipeline.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for Public Works?
Yeah, I had a question. Let me go back to, I think it was 110. I got off because I was looking for crosstown pipeline. On the, when it talks about the WRF master plan, CIPs, and then the next city rate study, are we talking about the water and sewer rate study?
Uh, yes, they're actually, they will be separate. The wastewater master plan has already been completed, and so we're ready to kick that off. We've just been waiting to get through the budget cycle, and then we will kick that off with NBS. And the water master plan is underway. They are waiting for, for some data from our water, water division when they, and then they'll be able to proceed with the, you know, and complete the, the water master plan. At that point, then we will kick off that rate study.
So if we, my only request would be that if we look, there's, I know city rate study appears on page 110 of the packet or 102 of the budget, so there might be another one in, let's see, this is for sewer. So there's probably a mention of it in water. So I think it would be helpful if we clarified that it's for the, you know, one is for the wastewater side of the, the sewer side of the bill, and one is for the water side of the bill, as opposed to just saying city rate study. Because if someone is reading through here, they might be like, what is, what kind of rates? So just a clarification add. And then, can we get a breakdown, we might not have it right this second, but for the final budget of the sewer treatment O&amp;M contract line? Because it went up fairly significantly, and I know that some of those costs are broken out, but not to add up to 4.3 million and 4.6 million. So just to, I see that 1.5 million of it, you know, had, we have in one point, in one year, in 1.8 in the other year is for VRSD, but that doesn't add, that plus the other two things called out don't add up to almost 4.6 million, so...
We have the breakdown. We can very easily provide that. The significant increase is due to $700,000 to MKN for, all right, the...
The reverse osmosis.
The AWTF.
Okay, so actually, that would, might be helpful to add that into the budget commentary, just because that's such a big jump in that line. And so that gets you closer to being able to add up to the 4.3 and 4.6.
How long is our contract for VRSD, do you recall? The VRSD contract, do you recall how long our contract is for?
They were on a five-year, we agreed to a five-year escalated rate, and we are in year...
Three?
Okay. They're, they're looking at some pretty high, they're doing comp studies for their employees, and their, their labor costs are going up, so it's something we should be watching in the next year or two, so...
My understanding was...
For the next contract.
My understanding was that they were also going to issue us a credit, a significant credit.
That's correct.
Yes, so because they found some other savings, yeah.
Anything else for Public Works?
I just had a random question. It talks about the implementation of a fire hydrant replacement program. Does, do we have to replace all of the fire hydrants?
The, the cost is borne by us, if that's what you're asking.
Oh, boy, okay.
What's the lifespan on a fire hydrant?
A fire hydrant should last a pretty long time. But what we're trying to do over time is replace an older style of fire hydrant that if it gets hit by a car or something, is just going to blow water all over town.
Which is what happens right now.
Yes, on many of them, but a lot of them have been replaced with a newer style that if it gets knocked, if the fire hydrant gets knocked down, valve closes and no water comes out. So that's, that's the replacement program we're talking about. We're not, it's not like the meter replacement program where there's a 12-year useful life of that meter, and so every 12 years we need to replace every meter in the city. That's not the case with fire hydrants. We're just replacing them as they need to be replaced with a new model.
Right.
On the, on page seven of the packet, when you list the elected officials, should we, Mr. Nellis, would you like your name spelled out? Right now it says Gabby. Okay.
Oh, wait, yes. My mic wasn't on.
So it should be Gabriela.
Yeah, and we overlooked adding the deputy city manager to the executive group, so we'll do that as well on that page.
See, our United Water, Water replenishment charges are going up again.
Here's a Pikiun thing on page 14 of the packet, at the very top. Fiscal year '26, it should say '26, '27, said '26, '26.
Good catch, thank you.
And we're going to double-check United Water now that their budget has been proposed and we have the correct rates. These budgets were incorporated some time ago, so we will double-check that.
And budget-related, but since I didn't get to give it during my report earlier, there is still at least one more year where we don't have to meet Fairbox for the Heritage Valley Express. Oh, which reminds me, in here it says that we, that VCTC operates our transit system. We should probably clarify what that relationship is because we have a contract with them to manage it for us.
Right, but they're not the operator.
But it's technically our, well, and it's a contract and it's technically, we, it was something that most, that some of the cities in the county, most of them do it for themselves in-house. And because of the relationship with Fillmore and both being small cities, we contract with VCTC to manage that for us. But that's where if the, we need to watch, so for this next year, we don't have to worry about it. But in the past, when Fair, if they don't extend the Fairbox relief that we got in 2020 due to COVID, before 2020, the city had to put up the, the difference, which was about $120,000 to $130,000 to meet the Fairbox. And it was a bit of a color of money. We got transportation funds back in exchange, but it wasn't general fund money. We had to pull it from our sales tax. So for at least another year, that's not an issue, but it is probably something that we should keep an eye on very closely to see whether or not there's an extension on that relief because it would potentially impact our budget farther to the end of our two-year cycle.
We also are waiting on clarification of a different kind of swap. When, last year, when the LTF funds through TDA went from our Valley Express contribution, went from 500,000 to 800,000, we were told that there was also going to be a swap, and this year that has, that has increased to 900,000. So that's decreasing the amount of funds that would otherwise have gone to streets. So if you see the 281 fund being lower, it's because more is being taken out for Valley Express.
When you look at page 10 on the miscellaneous stats, this is not really budget, but it's stats about us. Our square miles has grown, does it not? Or is that including the increase?
We're at 5.4 square miles now.
That is correct now.
Yeah, it used to be 4.5 or...
And that was, and it went up to about 5 with Harvest, and then...
You know, I can check whether that number should go up, given the Business Park West.
That's what I was thinking. It seems like, I mean, this is, again, Pikiun stuff, but some of it may show better for us as a city if you add the, and the parks on acreage. Does that include the...
The new, the sports park?
So anyway, those are a couple of small things that can be added later. I don't have, I just have a sense that a couple of them are off. We can be, just be, it's a showcase of us if anybody's looking at us.
Yeah, we'll take a close look.
I would guess that those park stats have been, because, because the new park basically doubled our amount of park space.
And we didn't just have 30 before, so I'm pretty sure it should, that should go up, so, but anyway, just...
We might have, because I thought, the stat I always heard was that it was basically doubling our park space.
Yes.
So this might already be an increased number, but it doesn't hurt to check.
Anyway, worth a check anyway, just to make sure. Thanks.
I think that's all I have for now.
Me too.
On that page that Lassie was mentioning about the stats, could you just put in some stuff that you put at the state as a city? You had some, some stats about, that you promoted?
Yeah, in the page that kind of goes over characteristics of the city.
It needs a little, it needs to be more sexy. Need some pizzazz.
I mean, it's pretty dry stuff, this bunch of stuff, you know?
At least they'll look at that, oh, the city had this, and they did this, and their accomplishments, like... Let's never let people forget things that have been done.
You got it.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're... Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys, for doing such a thorough job.
Directors, all right, is there any, now we're going to recess, right, to close session?
That's correct.
All right, so we recess to close session. That will not be recorded. And have a good night, San Apala. Thank you very much.
So do we need to adjourn this meeting to then recess back into...
San Apala lost some, some recent individuals who were very special to our community, and we'd like to close in honor of their memory. And Ray Luna and Bob Russell, may they rest in peace. We now adjourn, and Ray Luna was a former mayor for the city of San Apala. Thanks. Thanks.